Let the record show that today is April 21st, 2020, the time nine twenty eight, you know. Uh, Madam Clerk to the Board, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Flower.
Present.
Commissioner Kanda.
Here.
Commissioner Prince.
Here.
Attorney Clint Smith.
Present.
And Clerk to the Board Kelly Camper, present.
Thank you. Uh, let's go through the audience introductions. If you're on the, on the call this morning, I'd like you to introduce yourself, please. Kara, let's start with you.
Kara Evans, uh, the OCC Admin Assist.
Thank you.
Elliot Jackson, Wet Mountain Treveer.
Jackie Bubus for the Sentinel.
Alyssa Lynden Good, Director of Public Health.
Adrian Washington, Resident, Custer County, Tiscor One.
Cindy Flower, ETR Coordinator, Public Health.
Steve Laswell, a member of the Economic Development.
Rick Mekstroth on Economic Development.
Say that again? It wasn't clear.
Rick Mekstroth, I'm on the Board of Economic Development.
Spelling of your last name, sir?
Certainly it's M.E.C.K.S.T.R.O.T.H.
Thank you, appreciate it. Okay, do we have anyone else? Is Meredith on this morning?
She'll be here pretty soon.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else that's on the line with us this morning? Okay, hearing no further audience introductions. Kelly, you okay?
Yep.
Got the record of all that, appreciate it, thank you. Um, gentlemen, any amendments to the agenda?
None, you have none.
All right, let me roll call that. Mr. Prince?
No, sir, I have none.
Mr. Kanda?
None.
Nor do I, thank you. Administrative system item?
I'm good.
Thank you. Attorney item? There's Attorney Smith on? Vernon, do you have Attorney Smith?
Uh, yeah, Clint is, Clint is logged in here.
I'm, I'm here, I'm here, I was muted again.
Uh, you know what, we're gonna take that leave button away from if you don't hear it, you know?
I'm gonna put a feature page over it right now.
Uh, do you have anything to report, sir?
Uh, we're on, uh, amending the agenda right now, right?
Uh, no, we're on attorney items.
Oh, okay. Well, for attorney items, I guess the only thing, I did prepare a proposed resolution yesterday that I sent you, it was kinda late last evening, not anything for consideration today. Um, other than that, I guess, nothing to report since our last meeting.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner item? I know we're a little out of sync here, sorry. Commissioner Kanda?
Yeah, just quick one, uh, Kara, are you there? Can you hear?
Yes, I'm here.
Yeah, uh, yeah, I've got, uh, I'll get with you after the meeting. I need to get you the, uh, agenda item for the special meeting we're having, uh, with the towns of Silver Cliff, West Cliff, on the broadband, uh, strategy. And I'll, I'll define that with you and we'll, we'll publish that, uh, notice and we'll be doing that at the town halls I mentioned last week. So I'll get with you right after we're done here.
Okay.
Also, good, and also, uh, since we met last, I did talk with, uh, the Recovery Task Force Lead for Jacy County, Wendell Pryor, and, uh, also with Charles Vogel, uh, who we can consider as we get into the, uh, item here on number three for consideration of the task force recovery. Just to make sure that, uh, that our economics help the guys are, and that's one of the reasons they're online today, is to, uh, they're available for us to use as we decide here during the meeting, if we decide. And I had a good talk with, uh, with, uh, Wendell and he sent us a package that we can tailor, uh, as, uh, our task force that we develop can use later on. Uh, also sat through Governor Polis' meeting on the modeling, which was interesting. Uh, lots of, lots of data and stats that we learned I was not able to, and I don't think we were invited, I, I didn't get the notice anyway, to sit in on, uh, the second meeting he had at 3:30. But, but the first, the first meeting, uh, let me state it just for the record, a couple things that occurred that was very interesting. Uh, right now, we're, uh, market timer is about one percent, 1.3% of the state, uh, has, uh, had a, from a depth point of view, uh, pretty, pretty low compared to some of the others. Guess they reported one, 10,098 cases, 1,859, uh, and 56, uh, I guess 444 deaths. Anyway, uh, it was very neat on how they projected, uh, and it had to do with how the state will probably use this data to help on the recovery, uh, and timing and all that thing. I thought it was a very good meeting. And Jill Ryan, the Director of CDPE, was, uh, the Chair of that Board and Governor Polis had a few comments as well. Um, and then I was not able to attend our, uh, our meeting yesterday on the, uh, Policy Board and, and I have not been able to catch up with either you, Tom, or, or Jay on that. If there's anything significant, uh, that I need to know, I'll, I'll, I'll call you. Like, and pick your brains. And then, uh, see, I think, uh, I think that did for now. Oh, I was looking forward to, on our amendment, uh, of the Justice Center RFP, um, we're gonna consider that today, uh, right, Tom, I've got the copy of that, we have a current copy of a reply already, but I don't think I have a copy that I can find of what we sent out. Did you, did Kara send that to us?
Uh, I sent it to everybody, I can resend it if you need it.
Did you send the, uh, our, our, I can't, I, I lost track of it, it's buried here somewhere. I'll, I'll pull it up if I can, I'll ask for it. I told you.
Hey, anything, anything else, sir?
Not for me, for now.
Hey, uh, I was going through my emails, trying to find the email that you'd sent out about the broadband, uh, did we pick a date? I don't ever remember, I have to be something with dates.
No, no, we didn't, I haven't yet, I got replies from Silver Cliff and, uh, West Cliff, but I haven't heard from you or Jay on what, right now, the dates that we're looking at that are best for everybody is the afternoon on the first or the afternoon on the fourth. And so, look at your schedules and let me know what you want and I'll send out a notice to everybody that, uh, where we are and with, with the agenda after I nail that down with Kara.
Okay, now, uh, you've decided we're gonna meet at the West Cliff Town Hall?
At the West, yes, the West Cliff Town Hall made arrangements, it's set, uh, we can do the socially, uh, free spacing and, uh, uh, work the, uh, the details with Clint as well, for establishing, it's gonna be a quick Board of Commissioners meeting, uh, to set up and go into an executive session to discuss, uh, the strategy issues that we, that we've discussed.
So this is a meeting and not a workshop?
That's a meeting.
That's correct, Kelly.
Can I make a comment, please?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, on the fourth, we have the OEM briefing at two, it's a Monday, so just, I just want to bring that up, either, other than that, I'm fine with either day you pick. Um, why are we doing the face to face? Why are we not doing any Zoom meeting? I, I'm not thrilled with the place it is.
Because technically, uh, from a, um, equipment point of view, there's, there's a presence, we need to get the background, there's some slides on background, and then it's just a, a normal, uh, the interaction part of it is important too. And it's, it's, uh, it's a safe way to do this, I've, I've gone through that with, uh, the town, um, with Kathy Rice and, uh, Paul, and we can wipe down the things, we're gonna sit eight feet apart, there's not very many coming, it's a limited attention.
I understand you feel comfortable with it, but I, I would not.
Okay, we can, we can discuss it.
Hang on, let me finish, please. I would like Alyssa to tell us that, you know, she feels comfortable with it before I do. I, I trust Kathy and I trust Paul, I trust you, but I really trust Alyssa.
Yeah, we can take them, that's a good idea.
Uh, yeah, we can have that conversation, uh, it's not on the agenda date, so it needs to occur right now during Commissioner item. Um, I, I am not comfortable conducting an executive session over the telephone or any other, uh, media platform, I just.
That's right.
No way to control who is part of the conversation and who is not. Uh, obviously, uh, Zoom has had some hacking going on, over 500,000 was the last report I read, uh, cases of hacking Zoom, uh, conference numbers, so I won't, I understand your concerns, Jay, I'm, I'm entrusting the system that, that people hoping to meet and will do the right thing, but I won't support doing this unless it is face to face. Uh, I'd rather postpone it in ways that we have to.
That was where I was, that's why I selected it that way, actually, was one of the reasons, because you can't control it. And, uh, we can get recommendations and guidance from our Public Health Director, that's not a hard thing to go and see what we have to do to make sure we're as safe as we can be. And I think we, I think we'll be fine.
Uh, and, uh, West Cliff Town Hall is open on Fridays and Mondays?
It's for this meeting.
I thought they were on a four day week.
They said they would do this for this meeting, so we'll make sure that it's legit, that was the plan.
Hey, Jay, do you have preference on a date?
I, I don't have a, that's not, sir, I'm just concerned about the, uh, like I said a second ago, we have, uh, an OEM briefing, uh, on Monday.
Policy group meeting, is that the one?
And that's, that's.
Policy group, yeah?
Yes.
Yeah.
And that's the short, what is that about, roughly, it's been running about a half an hour, maybe a little more. So we could look at three to five possibly and on Friday and then, uh, all, any time during the afternoon on Monday, I'll, I'll check with everybody and see how that works
Uh, I guess my preference would be Monday morning sometime, like 10 o'clock.
Okay, we'll see if, uh, there was, I think a couple people may have had a problem with that, but 10, well, it might not be, oh, oh, look. Got it?
And make that meeting lasting any longer than an hour, hour and a half, most, so.
Shouldn't, that's right.
So I have a question for commi-, uh, for Attorney Smith, if, uh, you're on, sir?
I'm here.
Uh, so I have a question about who will be there? Exactly, do we need to know that ahead of time? Do we make that decision there? Is it gonna be open if anybody wants to step in on it? Uh, I struggle with that approach a little bit.
Well, as an executive session, it's close to the public, of course, it was my understanding, it would be the three county commissioners, the mayors of the two towns, and representatives from, um, the Carmel Group, and I'm not sure whether Bill wanted somebody from Economic Development to be present or not.
No, not now, but, uh, there are, we left it available for the towns to invite whoever they wanted, uh, to help be part of the conversation as well. Uh, and that, we would know ahead of time, so we can limit attendance, so that was the intent. And that, the notice that went out, if you read it, that's what it said.
And we will also need to have Kelly present or somebody there to, uh, record the meeting and I don't think there's going to be any legal advice during the course of the meeting, so it all should be recorded.
Uh, do you have a sense of how many people from Carmel's gonna be there?
Maximum of two.
Okay, so that's seven, three commissioners, two mayors, and two Carmel people, um.
I think, uh, uh, Buck Wenzel was gonna come with Steve, I believe, and I think, uh, Paul Winkie was gonna bring, uh, I can't remember his name, the new guy, lost that. That, yes.
Uh, Mr. Laswell, are you on?
Yes, I am.
Uh, comments, uh, do you think, uh, your mayor, Potem, is gonna attend, or?
Uh, yeah, in, in fact, depending on when we do the swearing in, he may be the actual mayor by then.
Oh, so it's not a January thing, huh?
No, no, it, no, it's, uh, it's a beginning of May thing, but since we're doing our trustee meetings, uh, uh, online, uh, we're gonna do the swearing in a couple of days before our next trustee meeting.
Oh, okay, all right, very good. Uh.
I think, uh, Steve, were you gonna bring, uh, your IT lead? It's your option.
I would, yeah, I would think so, and, uh, I personally think it would be a good idea to have, uh, the Economic Development IT people there, or at least a person.
Well, we'll talk about that, part of it is, this is a, uh, it's, it's, we're not talking the technical piece of this necessarily, it's the strategy of, of how we, and there'll be other contractors that were not gonna be privy to this as well, because it would go out for bid, so that's part of the reason, I'd run that by, uh, Clint and, and, uh, and the Carmel guys, we could get a, a little meeting together if we wanted beforehand to discuss the rationale and all that. That, it was just a presentation, this is a presentation to, to the leadership on the, you have to have, there's gonna be a little background and then it's, it's a matter of the strategy, and they've got a lot of this from the state passed down to us on, on the acquisition itself, so that, that was why it's limited.
Yeah, I mean, if you wanna have a meeting, we can have a meeting, executive session, we, I don't think we need a ton of people in there, if, if it's not.
Right.
You said it's not gonna really be a technical piece, then why would there be any IT people there?
That.
If the commissioners are talking strategy with Carmel and the two mayors, then I don't, I'm, I guess I'm a little confused of why we're.
Yeah, they, we, we do not, that's true, we do not need it, I just was looking at them as who, who they were using as their leadership piece on, uh, on this, and I don't know the details of how they're conducting, uh, their own piece of this, but that's why I asked.
Well, I guess they'll conduct it, however, the vote of commissioners to indicate to them that we wanna conduct it. Uh, Commissioner Prince?
No, I didn't mean that, no, wait a minute, wait a minute, Tom, don't sit, just hold on a second. I didn't mean conduct this meeting, I meant how they're doing business internal to Silver Cliff on understanding what, what their piece of this is in the acquisition strategy that they're using to disseminate it and put the product out after the fact, maybe it would be important, I don't know. But that's why they're directed at the leadership and not, uh, the technical people.
Commissioner Prince?
Uh, I previously mentioned, I'm not sure, I, I fully understand that why we even need an executive session, this is an update, we're gonna get prepared to put out an RFP, we're gonna talk about what's needed, I mean, we talk about RFPs all the time in open session. And I'm, I'm a little confused as to why this would be an executive session.
Well, my understanding is because, uh, we're gonna get into some confidential strategic conversations about moving forward and, uh, probably some sensitive information that shouldn't come out until we actually get to the RFP stage.
That's correct. It's just like we do in our other RFPs, we limited it, discussion so that a contractor doesn't have inside information on the, what's going on, so they can bid differently, as example.
Now, I, I, I understand that completely, we certainly wouldn't wanna give a contractor an edge, but in an open meeting, any contractor can listen in. I, I'm just concerned about doing this outside the public, so that, I don't want, I don't want to appear that we're trying to do business back behind closed doors, but, but if, if it's, if it's a contract negotiation, I'm a hundred percent in favor of it, but it doesn't sound like, it sounds more like a, say, decision making on what is, what we want to do, but if you're, I don't think that's a contract negotiation.
Well, strategic, strategic planning is allowed in executive sessions, so I think we're okay there.
Okay. And we're gonna make sure it stays at that level as well, so, uh, that's, that's the whole point, we, we will guard that.
That will be my job to make sure we stay on task. Uh, I'm gonna recommend the three commi-, I'm gonna recommend the three commissioners, uh, a mayor and one other person from each of the two municipalities, and two people from Carmel, uh, Kelly and Attorney Smith, attend the executive session.
That's the number, where are you?
So that would be three, seven, nine, eleven, counting Kelly and Clint, which I think is too many, but I'm.
Right, and, and when we were, uh, setting up the meeting with a estimate of who would be there, we were looking at maybe thirteen to fourteen, and the room handles that easily, according to them, anyway. So we need to get that verified and then we'll figure out how we're spacing things and we'll go from there.
I'm okay with it, I just wanna reiterate, I feel like all this, if, if you don't mind, Alyssa, helping us make sure that we're doing this, um, according to Clint.
Yeah, I think I'd like to look at the, um, room that we're gonna have 11 people in, I'm a little nervous about 11 people in, in one room.
Yeah.
But, it, we can look at it and decide.
Well, yeah, and if it doesn't work, we sure get it to nine, uh, commissioners, the mayors, Carmel Group, uh, Attorney Smith, and Clerk to the Board, so.
Yeah, it's easy to do.
So, uh, I, I guess if I don't need a motion to that effect, we can, I guess we can wait.
No, this is the progress, that's right.
We've still got a little over a week, huh? Depending on what day you select, but, uh, so I would say, in my opinion, and I don't know, Attorney Smith, we need to vote on this or not, but I'd say no more than 11, uh, and preferably nine, from the way I look at Carmel wanting to get into the strategic policy with the leadership.
No, you don't need to vote on that.
We do not need to?
Do not need to vote on that, you're just working out some administrative details.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anything else, Commissioner Kanda, thank you for that.
No.
Okay, so you're gonna shoot for, uh, Monday at ten, is that the, is that the consent as a meeting?
That was your preferred, that was your preferred one, Tom, and we'll see if, you know, so hang tight and I'll get a notice out, we'll make it fit the best we can for everybody.
Okay. So Mr. Prince, you okay with that date, or you want something different, date and time?
No, either one, you know, either one of those apply with me, sir.
Okay, all right. So the Friday one was three to five?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, I'm actually, I'm good with either one, I just prefer to do it on a Monday and get a running start of the week, but it doesn't matter, we can sure do it on Friday, that's what we need to do. Okay, Commissioner Prince?
I need a couple things I, I did, but, you know, I don't know if I'm gonna need to report on, like, you know, I attended the, uh, this, the meeting yesterday, um, with Alyssa and, um, Meredith, and I also, on Thursday of last week, um, sat through Senator Bennett's, um, briefing, which I, I really, I'm impressed with him, but a lot more with the medical staff that he brings in that gives us updates and stuff. Um, let's see, uh, I think that's probably about what I've been up to, um, just working through things that we need to work through.
Okay. All right, and that's kinda where I'm at, I mean, obviously, I've been sitting in on a lot of the teleconference meetings, policy group, uh, trying to stay on top of the governor's pitches to the state, uh, just, kinda like, uh, Commissioner Prince, just kinda hammering out the details as we go, the phone calls, a lot of emails, and, um, I guess nothing really earth shattering at this point, other than what everybody else has been doing, so I don't wanna burn up a lot of time on, on that. Anything else, gentlemen, for the, on, hey, uh, it's a special meeting that I believe will allow public comment, anybody has anything to, uh, bring to the commissioners that is not on the agenda, now would be the appropriate time to do that. Okay, hearing none, uh, unfinished business that I'm not aware of, gentlemen?
That's me, sir.
Negative.
Okay, nor do I, we're going on business, um, prior to the COCC voting on any of the items of this business, we'll allow for public comment as we go. Uh, I wanna thank everybody for being on the call this morning and in attendance for the meeting, we appreciate that, so. Uh, first item of business, consideration of amending the Justice Center RFP, um, I'll pull that document up here real quick, uh, so there was a question about, uh, do we need to amend it pertaining to insurance, bonding, and liquidated damages.
And I think, uh, last meeting we had, somebody brought up the fact that some boilerplate in there that alluded to that, I, but I still, I have not received anything since that meeting, Tom, did you send it out prior to that meeting? I'm, I'm going.
Nothing has been changed since it's been sent to the paper of record for published.
Okay, that's what I thought, that far back. Okay, I'm looking.
Uh, I can certainly throw out my opinions if, gentlemen, you're interested in hearing those, or I'll.
Why don't you do it? And you're fine, good idea. Go ahead, Tom.
Hold on just a second, um, so typically, on certain projects, there, there might be liquidated damages clause, uh, there might be a, uh, bond clause, uh, and then typically insurance clause. So, uh, in my opinion, given the scope and nature of this, uh, work to be done, certainly I believe we do need to have insurance certificates. Um, I did not write that in the RFP, I just absolutely. Um, I did not write that in the RFP, I just absolutely, uh, that just got away from me, but if you look at that RFP, just a second here, um, you'll see on... I didn't number these pages, but on the third page, on the evaluation methods under the criteria, the qualifications slash insurance coverage gets ten percent of the weight on evaluating bids. So I did put that in there as an evaluation tool, I just forgot to get the statement in the RFP that companies would need to submit, uh, appropriate insurance requirements. And I visited with Donna Hobbie, and, uh, she provided me with kind of a standard insurance coverage language that we usually include on a lot of this type of stuff. So, my personal opinion is, I think we need to amend this RFP to include the insurance coverage, and I have willing to forego the liquidated damages and the bonding requirements. I don't think there's really any need for a bond out there, uh, outside of the insurance coverage. I just don't see that there's a whole lot of, uh, liability or open liability that we would face on this particular project. It'd be different if they were gonna be in a huge office with, um, tons of technological equipment and worried about leaving doors unlocked and that kinda thing, I just don't think that's the case here, so that's my recommendation.
How many, uh, how many have we received? I saw one back...
Uh, I don't know, that date is not, uh, I haven't seen any, to be honest with you.
But, uh, maybe we have two today that's the Justice Center one, I'm sorry. Um, go ahead, Jay.
First of all, yeah, I read it, and I saw that part of the evaluation was, um, insurance. But I agree with you, Chairman Flower, that it really needs to be part of the requirements to bid, so that in the event we need to reject someone for failure to provide insurance, we have that right. I think the evaluation probably not sufficient, a lot of the idea of amending it. Um, I'm gonna take a little exception to the bonding and the liquidated damages. Um, I, I'm in favor of bonding, having a bond posted, um, just in case there is damage done and there's problems that occur, and if we wanna go after whoever it is for doing a poor job or inappropriate job, that we have some assurances that at least an insurance company, um, was purchased, insurance policy was purchased to protect us, just in case. Um, liquidated damages, I'm not too worried about, but I would recommend that we require a bond, but that's just my opinion, and that's my stand.
Okay, uh, a couple things, I guess, in response to Mr. Prince, by my...
Can you...
The general liability on an insurance coverage would cover any property damage, um, and as far as the work completion, I would, and it's written in the, uh, in the RFP that the work would be paid on a, uh, on a lineal footage completion with the final payment after the job is done, so I would think holding up final payment would ensure that the work is done, but...
Okay. I, I...
I'm not really hung up on this, I just think it's good practice to have a bond, but if it's really, I mean, if it's not necessary, I'm fine.
Yeah, I asked Donna Hobbie about that, she said that since she's worked for the county, uh, she has remembered one time they required a bond when there was a contractor inside the courthouse doing some work on the weekend, uh, and she said that's the only time she could ever remember a bond even being required, so, and that was just because of they had the filming open and nobody was around.
Okay, I'm good.
Hey, hold on, boy, it's time for me to talk. Unless you guys are gonna make a decision, then I'll vote later.
All right.
Could I just, excuse me, Tom?
We're, we've got, Jay was just finishing up his comments, Bill, we're not trying to exclude you from the conversation.
I thought you guys were having a conversation that he agreed with, that's what I heard.
Yeah, so, your thoughts, Bill?
Hey, I happen to agree with Jay. Most contractors that I know of, construction contractors are bought in order to protect them from accidentally doing something that's gonna cost a lot of money, it would put them out of business if they weren't, so it's a good practice, and it should be done. Uh, what I had a question about, what was the timeline, and I agree with you, we do need to amend this. Um, the timeframe that we asked them for response back was what? Because if we're gonna amend it, we're gonna probably extend the, uh, the time as well, I would think, or back.
Yeah, did you find your copy of the RFPs?
Yes, I did, thank you. And right now, I was just scrolling through it, and if you knew it off the top of your head, it'd help me. Otherwise, you can wait while I find it.
Right, twenty-seventh is the deadline for them to submit the RFPs.
Okay, uh, so that's, uh, in a little over a week. I think we talked about that last time, too. What do you think, is that enough time to get everybody to re-submit? And how, you know...
I guess it would depend on...
We're gonna have to get the local guy as well.
I guess it would depend on how we amend the RFP, if it gives them enough time or not, I don't know. I'm sure every debtor is, it's either themselves gonna have insurance, or their subcontractor's gonna have insurance, uh, there's, but get the bond may be a different deal, so I don't know. I guess I would wait and see what we decide how we wanna amend it, and we'll determine if we need to extend the deadline or not. So, Mr. Cando, how do you feel we should amend it?
Well, I think we ought to amend it to include that requirement to be insured, and , uh, and the bonding thing, I believe, is, that takes a couple hours, from what my experience has been with an insurance company. I don't think that's gonna impact them in time-wise. And from a point of view of extending the deadline, uh, I don't think it's gonna make a difference if we give them to the end of that week, which would be the first of May, uh, would be an option, uh, and it may not be a big deal to leave it on, but twenty-seventh, we can discuss that if you want.
Under normal circumstances, I wouldn't be overly concerned about timing on the bonding, but given the COVID-19, who knows? Uh, and then, obviously, the conversation would be the amount of the bond.
All right, I'm gonna make a motion. I move that we, uh, the amendment of RFP to reflect the requirement for insurance and bonding, and I would move to move at the same time the, uh, the date to receive these by the first of May. That gives them ten days from now, basically.
I'll say that, so that we can have some comments, yeah.
Okay, we moved a second to amend the RFP, uh, to include insurance requirement and bonding requirements, although we don't have a dollar figure on the bond, uh, and extend the deadline for submissions to May one. Discussion?
Yeah, the reason I would wanna extend it is how we, we've gotta get the word out, we want an amended, uh, response back, an amended RFP. So, we're getting close to publishing it in the paper, that would be today, uh, and then we would have to do it via the internet, et cetera, so that puts a pretty tight leash on them already, so that may be something we consider if we miss a deadline to publish.
Okay?
My comment, if I may, my comment is that, first of all, I received a comment that it wasn't being heard, am I being heard now, okay?
Uh, I've been able to hear you, yes.
Okay, good. Um, uh, my feeling is the motion is probably ineffective, since we didn't put in how much it was need to be, I mean, just requiring insurance and a bond, we need to say insurance equals to X percent of the value of the project, and the bond should be the same thing, just so we have some dollar figures to...
That's a good point.
What is...
Okay.
And criteria reflected a percentage, didn't it, that we're judging them on? We need to make it consistent, I think.
Well, that's an evaluation, but that's not the amount of the insurance and/or the bond that they put up.
I understand.
And, you know, the moment, you know, based upon, you know, what Donna Hobbie said in the past, and Tom, your comments, I, you know, I'm not, I think a bond is good business, but I don't think it's a necessity. You know, all it's gonna do is raise the bids, because ultimately, wouldn't affect for the bond, uh, so, you know, it's just, do we feel more comfortable, should we, should we, the county, pay for a bond, or do we feel that we really don't need to? 'Cause that's where it's gonna come down to, would it pay for it?
Okay, uh...
Yeah, I, go ahead, Commissioner Cando.
Let me respond to that, 'cause I've worked that area, and the bonding doesn't cost a lot, for a million dollar policy, if we require that, you know, it's a few hundred bucks, uh, a year, and I don't think that would impact significantly their bid, but I'm good with it either way, you, from a discussion point of view.
Yeah, I would recommend that we consider workman's comp, uh, a million dollars, general liability, a million dollars, and then, uh, vehicle, uh, coverage, a million dollars for bodily injury and property damage.
Are we making that an amendment to the motion?
Well, I...
I'm gonna amend the motion to reflect that.
Okay, I'll second that. Um, do we want, or move on, do we wanna include the bond amount, or no?
You know, based upon what you said and what Donna said, our previous history was, I suspect, you know, I'm gonna rub neck a little bit on what I said earlier, um, you know, I'm fine with not doing a bond.
Okay, but the motion is for insurance requirements and bonding requirements.
I'm still good with that.
I thought we had, I thought we had amendment to that motion.
As long as it's not respecting the insurance.
I'm just saying, what the, what the main motion was included the bonding, the amendment was just to add dollar figures to the insurance coverage. And we're in discussion of the amendment.
And I don't think it'll matter, I'm good staying with it is, as you read it, with the amendment for the insurance, my, my opinion.
Okay, my point was, before we go through all the voting, do we wanna add a dollar amount to the bond, if that's what you want, uh, or do you want to vote on the amendment and come back and amend the bond separately, it's, I don't care.
Well, with your amended motion, you did not have bonding in there.
No.
So if we approve this, so if we approve your amendment, the bonding has fallen off, so I'm looking at it.
Yeah, no, the bond will not fall off, it'll part of the main motion, we're just voting on the amendment.
Okay, so...
The bond will stay on, is my point.
Then we can talk about the bond, for a minute.
Okay, further discussion on the amendment, uh, of amending the main motion to include a million dollars for workman's comp, general liability, and automobile coverage? If not, uh, we'll proceed to vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Sorry, and I will vote aye as well, the amendment passes, we'll now vote on, or have further discussion on the main motion, which is to, uh, amend the RFP with the aforementioned insurance requirements and a bonding requirement. Discussion?
I'm okay with the bond off.
I'm okay with leaving it. Uh, I don't think it matters what amount it is, if you really believe you don't need it, why do you care?
Well, personally, I don't, but as you both pointed out in our...
That was just a, that was a rhetorical question, I agree, so, but it's good either way, I think, and we're, it's sort of like an added pad there, it helps the contractor.
Okay, just to put it on the table, I move that we amend the original motion by dropping the bonding requirements.
I'll second it. The move is second to amend for the final time, by the way, gentlemen, the main motion by striking the word bonding requirements. Discussion? I get your point, gentlemen, that it's probably good business, uh, I just, given the circumstances and the fact that it's an outdoor project, I think our insurance requirements are gonna more than cover, uh, the issue, um, that's just my feeling, if it's irresponsible, I don't know, but that's the way I feel about it.
Okay, and I'll make my final comment, I'm not gonna argue anymore about it, it debated, but, uh, outside activity occurs when a homeowner hires a contractor to put road base in on his driveway, and most of them ask, are you bonded? And most people want them to be bonded, just in case Joe Blow runs into his car, or Paul actually rolls his back over and injures himself on his property, so that's the reason you'd want it, and I think it ought to remain.
Well, I guess my comment would be typically, I don't know if most people understand the difference between insurance company, insurance coverage and bonding, if they have their standard insurance coverage, that kinda stuff would be covered, um, but, uh, bonding to me would cover employees of the contractors stealing, um, obviously, anything outside of the scope of the insurance coverage. And I would feel pretty comfortable in this situation, the insurance coverage should cover everything that I'm concerned about, that would be my point, Bill, and certainly, I don't look at this as an argument, it's debate, yes, uh, I agree that from the business standpoint, I guess, you can make an argument either way for that, but... So just trying to have an honest discussion, from my standpoint, uh, further debate on the amendment, which is to strike the word bonding requirement. Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote, all in favor, say aye. Commissioner Prince?
Aye.
Commissioner Cando?
Aye.
And Commissioner Flower votes aye. Um, the amendment passes, we will strike the word bonding requirement. Any further discussion on the main motion, which is to amend the RFP by adding the insurance requirements of a million dollars each for workman's compensation, general liability, and automobile coverage?
Tom, can I just ask a question for clarification?
You may, go ahead.
I thought that this RFP was for, um, somebody, for them to figure out how they were gonna get the money to build the Justice Center.
All right, great point, we're not on the Justice Center RFP, we're on the landfill RFP, Kelly, I'm sorry.
Okay, 'cause the agenda says Justice Center RFP.
Ooh, I was just gonna say, oh, it does, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. That's a great point.
Um, all right, okay, I got a real issue, I've been working with the Justice Center RFP, not the landfill one.
Me, too.
Yeah, I was working the landfill, which is...
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm out of space, apparently, so, totally...
Oh, you're fine.
My mistake, as chair, I, it says Justice Center. From my perspective, that was a typo, I don't, I didn't remember...
I think you meant the landfill, that's the landfill, that's right.
I mean, if there was some... I mean, if there was something we need to do to amend the Justice Center RFP on, I'm not familiar with that, I, that was my mistake, uh.
Well, I pulled up the Justice Center RFP initially, but I knew we were talking about the, uh, landfill.
Right, I totally, we're talking about hiring the company to help with the fundraising for the, I apologize, I, I, it's probably me, I'm out left field somewhere.
No, no, uh-
Okay, let's back up then, we needed to amend the agenda, cause there was a typo to begin with, and, and that's what we should have done, we didn't, we didn't discuss that because we didn't look at it, so, uh.
Okay, and oversight on my part, I apologize, and you don't need to apologize, uh, yeah, I think Bill and I were just automatically going down the landfill thing and that, that was my mistake, so, uh, Attorney Smith, what do you think here, we've talked ourselves into a hole, can we go back to amend the, uh, agenda, shall we strike everything pertaining to the landfill, because really, we're out of order?
Well, I, I've been with Jay on this all along, I thought you were talking about the Justice Center, and I, I thought that RFP was already done and published and everything, so-
Yeah.
I, I, I-
It is, and so is the landfill one.
Well, yeah, the deadline, the deadline is not coming gone, and the RFP for the Justice Center has, that was a typo on my, on my part, I apologize.
I, I honestly think it's too late to amend the agenda, you've already, you've discussed this for twenty minutes, with presumably some people being as confused as Jay and I were, so, I honestly think it needs, needs to be back on in the future agenda and get it straightened out, have it listed under the right name.
So, so, Jay, the, the, the fact that you got heavy equipment out there now changed your mind on bonding or not? If it doesn't, let's just execute this thing.
Now, wait a minute, um, I'm not sure if we could just jump into that, um, now, I, look, I, I think when machinery is on site, whether it's at the Justice Center location or it's at the landfill, the things we've talked about are the same, um, I just was, I was going by, I reread the Justice Center RFP for the company to help us raise money, how to raise the money if we, you know, when we move forward with this, I, I hadn't really been thinking about the landfill, but I think the issues are identical, and fine if we wanna, I mean, if, if legal counsel thinks we ought to move it to another date, let's do that, but I'm not gonna, I'm not, I'm not coming to get issue over whether this was the Justice Center or the landfill, um, I'm okay with it, the way it was, you know, the way, the discussion we had.
Yeah, we're technically, we're out of order, um, with the maker of the motion concern, well, you know what, I'll move to withdraw the motion, the motion no longer belongs to the maker of the motion, because it's been restated by the Chair, therefore, anybody can make a motion to withdraw, so I will move to withdraw the motion concerning amending the RFP for the landfill.
I'll second it.
The move to second it to withdraw the motion, uh, pertaining to amending the RFP for the landfill, discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote, all in favor say aye, Commissioner Prince?
Uh, aye.
Commissioner Kenda?
You said landfill and it's Justice Center.
No, the motion was landfill, which is out of order.
Actually, the motion said Justice Center.
That did?
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, that's where I've been going all along.
Maybe that, maybe, I, you're probably right, I did, cause I looked down at the agenda as I made the motion, all right.
I will rephrase then, and move to withdraw the motion to amend the land, or the Justice Center RFP.
I, I'll, did you, I'll, he's, okay, let's, let's vote.
The move to second it to withdraw the motion concerning amending the Justice Center RFP, uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion is withdrawn, um, what's the group's pleasure for consideration of amending the Justice Center RFP?
Uh, it's not the Justice Center RFP.
Uh, yes, it is, that's on the agenda.
Well, oh, you wanna, you wanna go to the agenda, okay, you, you-
Yeah, yeah, we're just, we're just never starting the meeting.
Uh, I, I move we strike that agenda item.
Um, as Attorney Smith said, uh, we've gone past the agenda, amending the agenda portion.
You asked me what I thought of it, okay.
I'm gonna rule that out of order, but, uh, that's why I'm asking, do you want to consider amending the Justice Center RFP, you can tell, have a negative motion, uh, if, if the V O C C does not want action on this item, we'll move on, but I need to-
Okay, then I don't, I move we don't take action on this item, Justice Center RFP.
Okay, we cannot have a negative motion, so-
Wait, wait, I'm sorry.
Unless there is a motion to amend, we will move on.
Oh.
Do I hear a motion to amend the Justice Center RFP?
No.
Hearing none, we'll move on, the second item of business is consideration of posting the workshop recordings, uh, this was a carryover from our last meeting, uh, we postponed it to today.
Yeah.
With pleasure on consideration of posting workshop recordings.
Well, we moved it to this base, so we could discuss, and I move we post workshop recordings, uh, in this, and, and the reason for it would be this environment where we're meeting the, uh, conference call, uh, and it affords a public opportunity to understand what the workshop, um, uh, issues are.
Is there a second? And to hear the discussion, I will second the motion, uh, can move to second it to this, uh, post workshop recordings, discussion?
Okay, I, as I mentioned before, it, it, uh, affords the people that are not able to get the, uh, technology to get them into a workshop to understand and hear things, uh, this would allow that, and it's important, I think.
I have a contrary view, um, I feel we've never, if I may please, I, I feel we've never posted recordings before, I don't think we should start a new precedent, just because we're in a different format, anybody could put a recording device up to their phone if they choose to, um, I feel that we should not amend a policy that's been in place for as long as time immemorial, workshops not posted.
Okay, uh, further discussion? So, I, I oppose to the motion, uh, as I indicated before, when we had conversation about this, I just don't believe that warrants having, uh, clerk to the board come in and have to record the workshop, so.
I don't know that it, I don't know that I asked, that the motion wouldn't matter, who recorded it, it would, as long as it was made properly, maybe that's the, I-
Yeah, clerk to the board would have to record it, if that's what the V O C C decides, or her deputy, either one. Kelly, is that right, or could you appoint somebody that's not your deputy?
Uh, it would have to be myself or a deputy, um, I don't know, it's something I've been mauling over, in case you guys decide to do that, I don't know, um, if I would have to physically sit in there, or if I could just bring it, bring the, my computer in and start it, and, I don't know, I guess that would just be something we'd have to address, if you decide to do this.
Okay, further discussion? Further comment?
Tom, this is Jackie, um-
Go ahead.
I believe that workshop has already been recorded, uh, the call said it was being recorded, uh, so, it's just a matter of posting the recordings from the calls, not something Kelly would have to do anything.
Well, we're not necessarily talking about, uh, teleconference workshops, we're talking about workshops for the V O C C.
Actually, we are, that's what Bill said, was during this time, when we're doing it via teleconference, with the posts of-
That was a point that holders back.
Kelly, could you, Kelly, could you reread the motion, please?
Um, the motion that was just made?
Yeah.
So-
And-
It was ju, it was, uh, motion by Commissioner Kenda to, um, post the workshop recordings.
Thank you. Further public comment?
Then, uh-
Tom? Tom, this is Clint, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Okay, uh, this is Clint, I'm just, I mean, the way I'm understanding the motion is that all workshops, even when the restrictions are lifted and you're meeting face to face, all workshops would have to be recorded from here on out, that's my understanding.
That, that would be the case, you're, you're right, and if you recall, you're right, we probably need to amend this then, because of, in, in that motion, when I stated it, I said, because of the fact that we are in this pandemic, uh, where we're on these recordings, that was the intent, was, well, because nobody could attend it openly, uh, that was necessary to do during this timeframe, so I would like to, maybe we make a motion to amend that, so that it is only during the time that we are required to have these meetings by teleconference.
Is there a second to the amendment? Is there a second to the amendment? If not, the amendment dies. Further dis- Uh, public comment?
Yeah, Adrian Washington.
Go ahead, sir.
I, I really don't understand where the, oh, you guys spoke of transparency at your last meeting, I don't understand really why you would not want the meetings recorded, so that the members of the public can listen to what is going on, uh, it does not require that anyone type anything or write up anything, we simply have the mechanisms available, this meeting right now is being recorded, and I really don't understand why you would be opposed to having people who can't get on the conference call last time, uh, we were not able to get into the conference calls, or we were not able to participate, I was able to do that, but other people bowed in and they were not able, so I simply don't understand why you would not have the meeting recorded.
Okay, thank you, further comment?
This is Cindy Flower, EPR coordinator.
Go ahead.
Um, just for clarification, Bill's statement was, um, somewhat of an oxymoron, and maybe, Bill, you can explain what you mean, if people didn't have the technology to join the workshop, then how are they gonna have the technology to listen to the recording? And also, uh, if a workshop has never been recorded before, why should they be recorded now, and the notices are exactly the same on a webpage, whether it's in person or whether it's on the talk?
Okay, thank you. Further comment?
Let me address your concern there, cause oxymoron may or may not be true, the point that I was trying to make is that in a normal meeting, workshop wise, people are able to physically drive their cars in and attend these workshops, uh, and, and hear in person and comment, et cetera, and they, and they, uh, in the environment we're in right now, it is very difficult to, yeah, in, 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 technology wise, as I mentioned, to get into them, Cindy made a good point, that doesn't mean that that person can't go to their neighbor and catch up and listen in on his, uh, uh, technology or telephone or whatever, however it's gonna be posted, uh, and this particular meeting, I believe, we'll have to ask Fern how they're, how they're gonna be posted, but it could be a recording, uh, that's posted, uh, pick up on your, uh, like dialing in, I'm not sure how they post them, to tell you the truth, that's something that we need to understand, but good questions, Cindy, thanks.
Further public comment?
Yeah, this is Jackie Bubas again, you know, there are people in the county that don't have cell service where they live, so they really couldn't call in, and, and would like to probably hear them after the fact, um, but, you know, if you guys wanna shut that down, that's just fine.
Further public comment? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote on the motion, which states that the, uh, workshops be posted, or be recorded, and that recording be posted, all in favor say aye. Commissioner Prince?
Nay.
Commissioner Kenda?
Nay.
Oh, my God.
And Commissioner Flower votes nay, I, I didn't quite hear Commissioner Prince's vote, so I'm reluctant to announce the results of the-
I'm sorry, sir.
Let me start, all in favor of posting the workshops, say aye. All opposed, nay?
Nay.
Nay.
Commissioner Flower votes no, it's well, motion failed, uh, let's already show, uh, zero in favor, three against posting the workshops. Next item of business is consideration of establishing an economic recovery task force, uh, discussion or, or entertain a merchant, however you want, okay?
Uh, if I may, Mr. Chairman, uh-
Go ahead.
Like, I, I like this idea of having, um, I, I don't mean about private citizens, but non-elected officials, business people and, and others, um, be part of the reopening of Custer County, I, I think the governor did an excellent job yesterday, um, laying out what the, what the state's stance is, um, so, um, you know, I, I think as long as we follow the mandates of the state, um, I'm, I'm okay, if we cast a force to help do that, I'm all in favor of it, um, so, I, I think we need to be careful who we put on this committee, uh, if we choose to do it, um, and I'll have some, I'll, I'll make some comments about that later, if that's where we get to, but, um, I think it's a good idea, but I think it has to be done in, in the confines that the governor has laid out for the state.
Okay, um, I've got a quick comment from myself, uh, I believe there's a need for this economic recovery task force, uh, I'm not in favor of calling it a citizens' task force, this is business, so I would like the emphasis to be put on, uh, economic recovery from a business standpoint, um, I'd like to see us come up with, um, names that we can consider, uh, as I indicated before, I believe this is a V O C C responsibility and not a Board of Health responsibility, uh, but certainly, I'm watching you in the conversation soon.
Okay, uh, my turn, I agree, uh, full-heartedly, it's something that we must do, it's economic recovery, I think the way forward would be to, uh, get a task force lead, uh, some names in the, uh, to consider, uh, for us to consider as soon as possible, uh, I, I would recommend the, uh, Custer County Economic Development Corp. Uh, I, I would recommend the, uh, Custer County Economic Development Corp., um, facilitate this as possibly our leader to bring. And then we could talk about it if we got some other names to consider. We could do that against them. Uh, but I would like to have that, uh, person, uh, group propose the makeup of this task force for us to consider. And, uh, and then, uh, I believe, uh, we can have a discussion. Maybe it's a special workshop to do that or another meeting. Or if I think we can get it done in this meeting, I'm fine with it. Proceed. And then, uh, define the goals, objectives, come back to us with a tailored, uh, program that, uh, pulls together, Custer County specifically, how do we get back to work possible?
Yeah, I appreciate your comments, Bill, and agree with, uh, with all of them. Uh, I want to ask the reps from the Economic Development Corporation, Ken and I, I would like to take the head of this as well, but that's my opinion. Uh, if you have a thought about that?
Um, I think Economic Development needs to get party to this. I think this is a BOCC, um, decision on who is on this task force or not. I don't think anybody, any single individual should have, individual should have the right to assign any member to the recovery task force. Uh, I, I truly feel that Economic Development should play a major role in it, but the ultimate decision lies with the BOCC.
Uh, yeah. I agree with you. Ken and I both agree with you there. I think that's what...
And I, and I stated that in fact, it, it is our decision. We need recommendations of it, and we need reason why that person or people are key to that and are critical. And I think that they have the ability to ferret that out for us.
Right. Yeah. Uh, I'm going to ask if somebody does not have their phone muted, uh, would you mute it? Get a lot of feedback. Uh, yeah, I think that in the spirit of Commissioner Kanda's comments, that, that whatever those recommendations are, they come back to the BOCC for final approval, and I agree with that.
Uh, that's exactly the way it should be. I agree.
Uh, this is Charles Vogel, and I, and I, I support that position.
Okay, good.
Thanks, Charles.
Yeah. Chair would certainly entertain a motion to, uh, for the establishment of the task force?
I'll go ahead and I'll move that we form an economic recovery task force for Custer County, um, with, um, asking the Economic Development Corporation to take the lead in helping make recommendations to the BOCC of folks who should be on this recovery task force.
And, and I'll, I will second that, but I would like to, uh, in, include in that motion, uh, not only back with the recommendation, but also the recommended, uh...
Possibly.
Goals and objectives?
Yeah, goals and objectives, maybe it's the straw man playing.
I'm fine with that.
I was going to say, Commissioner Prince, or by consent, are you okay with that?
I'm fine with it, yes.
Uh, so it's been moved and seconded to form an economic recovery task force and ask the Custer County Economic Development Corporation to take the lead on that and to develop, uh, a list of potential, uh, business owners to be on that committee as well as some goals and objectives for the task force. Uh, further discussion? Public comment?
Um, yes. Uh, Commissioner, uh, uh, this is Elliot from, uh, The Tribune. Uh, Commissioner Prince, you said you sat in on the governor's meeting about economic recovery the other day. Can you just summarize briefly what he said about... Um, can you just summarize briefly what he said about the criteria for opening businesses back up, um, specifically with regard to public health concerns like testing? Access to testing?
I'm going to disallow you...
This is beyond the scope of this, yes.
It is not germane to the motion, which is the creation of an economic recovery task force. If you have public comment?
Uh, with respect, with respect, Mr. Chairman, when it's a public health crisis, how is addressing the issues of what public health, um, measures you would have to take to, in fact, open up the economy? How is that not germane?
Uh, because we're debating whether or not to create an economic recovery task force. I'm not discounting that your questions are legitimate. It's just not appropriate to come under consideration of forming an economic recovery task force.
And let me, and let me, let me help add to that, Tom, because you're correct. And, uh, in fact, that's the whole point. That's, that's why we need the plan, uh, and the task force established. And then you, uh, work, how do you interact with the crisis and the public health concerns to marry the two together so you can balance, so we, uh, as the commissioners and later as a health board, can balance the risks vice the benefits.
Okay, point taken. Uh, yeah, I'm there. It's a great question that needs to be asked to the task force once that, uh, task force has been formulated. And then, in the fashion, certainly you're welcome to re, uh, restate your question during public comment, uh, uh, at the end of the meeting as well. I'm not trying to cross your questions if not germane, in my opinion, to whether or not we appoint a, or formulate a recovery task force. Further public comment?
Question? May I make a comment on that, please, sir? Uh, I think, um, Ms. Elliot's question is, um, significant, appropriate, and I'm happy to answer my interpretation of what the governor said, um, later in the meeting when we had just opened discussion, if, if that's acceptable with you, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, certainly is. I, I think I just reiterated that that she would more than welcome to, uh, restate her question during public comment. Uh, at the end of the meeting, the chair will not allow it for, uh, considering economic recovery task force. Further public comment?
A question?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Uh, Adrian Washington, I would ask, uh, that there are a lot of faith-based communities in Custer County, and I would ask that churches be considered a, a part of this proposed task force so that we would at least be offered the opportunity to have a seat at the table.
Okay. Uh, I have a question for you then. Um, would you consider churches a business or are they a nonprofit organization?
Uh, they are, in one respect, I would say they are both. I would say that they are essential organizations in the county, and we have not been treated that. And so I would say that as essential, we are... Tom, I would answer the question and say that we have a constitutional right to assemble an account. That's certain.
I'm, I'm done with this con- this conversation, Mr. Chairman. This is way beyond the scope of a question on the table.
Also, my question again is I've asked that churches be included at the table.
That would be, uh, certainly a consideration that I would assume. Number one, the task force, when it's, uh, appointed, will consider. Number two, probably Economic Development Corporation. Uh, I think your question has been noted. Thank you, sir. Any further discussion?
Yes, Jackie Bubas. Hopefully, this will be on topic, but is there a timeframe, um, for putting this task force together? Are you going to wait till the next meeting to vote on first of it? Um, or are you, I mean, that seems like you still might be behind the eight ball there.
Good point. Thank you. Um, I would defer to Mr. Vogel for some comment.
We will obviously, uh, address the urgency of this and, uh, we'll have to make an assessment since this is a new assignment, but assure that, uh, we will approach for full representation of our community and as quick as possible.
Let, let me make a comment, Tom, if you can.
Go ahead, sir.
When I introduced the, uh, resolution or the, the point, the point that I made also, it had to be timely. So I was expecting first we stand it up and then the next, uh, uh, part of this process on the, on this motion or on this topic, I should say, would be to establish a timeline, but it would have to be based on who we're, if, if we've got the leadership, uh, that we're discussing here in the present, the meeting, we can also look at, uh, proposing a, a timeframe in which we want them to come back with some recommendations. And, and that wouldn't be necessarily as soon as possible. We ought to put a date on it once we pass this motion. You could consider that.
Well, as it stands currently, the next time we would be able to consider this would be April 30th.
Unless we make it a sub-part of this motion, you're correct. An amendment to this motion, I guess.
Well, yeah, I mean, we can't amend it to a specific term, and because we don't have a special meeting scheduled until, we don't have another meeting scheduled until April 30th. So if you wanted to attach a time to it, then obviously we'd have to schedule a special meeting first and then you could...
That's correct.
We'll refer this to that time, but you can't do it until we set up a, a special meeting if that's what the BOCC wants.
Right. And, and that's exactly what we did last time when we, that resulted in this special meeting. And this would necessitate another discussion at the end of the meeting here to, to set up a, to propose a time for a special meeting, like we did last week.
Mr. Vogel, I have a question for you, sir.
Shoot. What have you got, Chairman?
Do you think you would be in a position to report to us at a workshop on writing your headway on creating this task force?
We could certainly give you a status, uh, you know, as we have spoken, additional information has come through, uh, with the Chaffee County initiatives. And I think, uh, from what, uh, being able to see from yesterday and this morning, you know, they're, uh, they've made considerable progress, and I would assume that we will, uh, look at that seriously. The issue will be, uh, confirming, uh, I think, local membership, uh, as far as making those contacts and, and, uh, getting individual representation from the various groups. But we can at least, uh, give you a status on Friday.
Okay. Uh, you know, but I, I, I'm throwing out my opinion about this or my thoughts about it. We can, we can go forward, however, uh, I kind of hate to wait nine more days till the 30th to formalize something with this economic recovery. I think it's more important than that. Uh, I know and realize that, um, it's going to be a little tough for the Economic Development Committee to function, uh, much before that, but I might consider, uh, recommending we have a special meeting like on the 27th. Your thoughts about that?
I, I agree. We need to do it sooner or later. That was the point, uh, of the discussion. And I think, uh, from what I know also, Charles and I have been in touch with, uh, the economic plan at Chaffee County. And it's a great str- uh, and we've got a copy of it now. All signed off, so we know what they did, how they did it, uh, and the other things that are important. I believe Charles can get back to us. And given him the difference between the 24th and the 27th, it's a weekend, it's not a business day, we don't lose any time necessarily. And I think the 27th, I would amend the, uh, motion, but I didn't make the motion, uh, like just, uh, hated.
Oh, that's okay. You can still amend it. You can move to amend...
Yeah, so, so I will amend it to include, uh, having them get back to us on the 27th. We can pick a time. Let's make it nine o'clock in the morning.
Um... As I indicated earlier, we're, we're in a little bit of, uh, no man's land, uh, state in the state that we don't have a commission meeting set on. Uh, but I think, Cheryl, go ahead and entertain your amendment, um...
Let's get some advice from Clint. We did the same thing. I think we have, have that ability to make a special meeting, though, and I thought we did.
Oh, yeah. I could call a special meeting. That's not a problem. Yeah. Um...
Commissioner, Commissioner Flower?
Yes.
Uh, this is Dale Mullin with Economic Development. Uh, I also had the opportunity to listen to, uh, the governor yesterday afternoon. And the question I have for the three of you, also for Alyssa at Public Health and for Charles Vogel, is I distinctly heard the governor said that on a county-by-county basis, a plan needs to be prepared by each county and submitted to the state on how they plan to reopen their counties, uh, as people come out of the state from home order. Uh, who is responsible for preparing that Custer County plan and getting it to the, uh, state, particularly when they're planning to, on the first of May, uh, open phase one of the, uh, reopening?
Yeah, it's a great question. I would defer to Alyssa, but I can tell you that they have already, uh, have that document, partially completed, at least in phase two. So Alyssa, go ahead and speak to that if you would.
Sure. Um, that will be determined at the Board of Health meeting tomorrow. Um, and we'll be looking at what exactly phase one for Custer County looks like, what phase two looks like, when phase two will be appropriate, uh, when phase three will be appropriate. Um, that, so that's part of, I, I was kind of thinking about that as a question as well. This economic recovery task force, is that going to be the same people that are looking at this phase one and two and three? Or is that just economics solely? I mean, I, so I realize the lines are a little blurred, but...
Let me, it, that's...
Go ahead, Commissioner Kanda.
Yeah, what, uh, the way it's being done in, uh, other counties, uh, this is an economic development task force that is under the auspices of the county to execute under the commissioners and the health department, the health board in this case, is responsible for making sure there's input, uh, and consideration on, and, and on the health aspects of this, the, the, uh, the processes that we are going through. That will be discussed at the Board of Health meeting, but it is not the authority for the act of economic recovery plan that has to have the county, uh, auspices under it. So, uh, that, that's a good question, and it has to involve both. And so I would look at the task force to, uh, be, uh, working in, in plan, that coordination with the public health agency, which is made up of both the county health board, uh, I should say, the public health board and the public health director. And they're coming together with, uh, the recommendation for the health board to put it forward.
I agree with that.
I would, I agree that this is going to take close coordination of both aspects of it, but I think the private, primary driver will be the, the medical aspect of it.
That's, that's, that's probably true. It has to be.
Okay.
I mean...
Go ahead.
I think where, where we are is the bill again. Uh, I think we're all in agreement, and, and that gets the consideration. Remember that the trade, health, and the recovery of, of citizens has to be with the elected officials, and that was the point of why we reorganized the, not reorganized, we organized the public health agency, and the lines of authority have been corrected and adjusted account for that. So I, I think it'll, uh, be, uh, able to work very well to get what the county, uh, task force is set up to, includes and marry the two together. That forward, and I don't know what the timeframe is, uh, when do they want the plan? It's up to us, right? We're, we're driving it, and the sooner we can get our plan in there... We're, we're driving it and the sooner we can get our plan in there, the sooner it's understood and approved and assumed. Something needs to be created differently.
Um, yeah, this is Meredith. I think I talked to that plan, um.
Okay. Meredith, can you hold on a second? We're still getting a lot of feedback. I'm ask, I'm gonna ask everybody to make sure their phone is muted so we can hear. Thank you. Go ahead, ma'am.
Okay, so, um, in my, uh, watching of the governor's, uh, conference yesterday, there was no, um, plans needed to be made, um, at a certain time for, from the county to the state. However, we do have an opportunity to issue waivers, uh, to the state, which we are looking at that today and then will be brought to the Board of Health, uh, tomorrow. Um, part of that is creating the plan of, of phase one, phase two, phase three reopening, which we have in place. We have, we have phase one and two detailed out. Um, three still is in the works, uh, detail wise. Um, and so, um, there has to be certain things in place, testing capabilities locally. We have that. Um, and so we're diving into that, but there's no, um, other than having a waiver in place, there's no, like, plan to be given to the state. Does that make sense?
Yes. Yeah, and I think, uh, Mr. Vogel was exactly right. This is the kind of collaboration, uh, that we're gonna have to have, working in conjunction with to get these, uh, proposed phases through the Board of Health, get them moved on to the task force, uh, and then work in conjunction with each other. Um, so I, I think your point is well, well made. I did not hear a specific stage by the governor either, uh, but I think the point was he's leaving it up to the counties to come up with their individual plans, recognizing from pressure from TCI and other groups that you cannot treat all counties in this state alike. So, uh, further discussion on the amendment which states, um, setting a deadline of April 27th at nine AM or at the meeting to start at nine AM for economic development to, uh, bring a proposal to the BOCC.
Tom?
Yes?
Nobody ever seconded that motion.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I will second the amendment then. Thanks for bringing that to my attention, ma'am. Uh, so it's been moving seconded. Any further discussion on amending the main motion? Public comment?
If I may assert this would be a, a special BOCC meeting on the 27th, is that planned?
Uh, that's the assumption and I will probably, uh, schedule that after this motion has been dealt with. We've got the horse before the cart, or the cart before the horse, but.
Got it. I just want to know how we would do it.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, that's okay.
That was the motion for a special meeting on the 27th, nine o'clock, or timeframe.
A clarification, a question from the public?
Uh, go ahead.
I, I heard the governor announce that counties could apply for exceptions from the state's policies. Is that what we are doing here?
No, we're debating whether or not to amend the main motion to have CDC report at nine a, at the meeting that starts at nine o'clock on April the 27th.
But the long range goal is to prepare a plan to submit to the state, is that correct?
Uh, I would guess that'll be one of their goals and objectives coming out of the task force, absolutely, yes.
Okay, I just would suggest maybe you look at what Douglas County has done and what Eagle County have.
Okay, Douglas and Eagle, okay.
Yes, sir. They've submitted plans to the governor.
Further public comment on the amendment? Hearing none, proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Amendment carries, will now vote on the main motion, uh, which is to, Kelly, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we're back to the main motion of, uh, formulating the recovery task force, having the Economic Development Corporation take the lead and, uh, give their proposal to the BLCC on April the 27th.
And it included the roles and responsibilities, Tom?
Yes, goals and objectives. Is that accurate according to your record, Kelly?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am. Further discussion, gentlemen? Public comment? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye. Commissioner Prince?
Aye.
Commissioner Kanda?
Aye.
And Commissioner Flower votes yes. Motion carries. Uh, we will formulate a, an economic recovery task force with the Economic Development to take the lead, uh, come up with a list of potential members to serve on that task force and, as well as some goals and objectives. Thank you all, appreciate that. Thank you for, to the Economic Development Corporation for taking the lead on that. We'll look forward to hearing from you. If you want, uh, Mr. Vogel, to give us a status report on the 24th, you'd be more than welcome to do that.
Will, uh, do that.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Commissioner Flower, this is Alyssa.
Go ahead.
Um, we just want, will we, will the EOC be involved in that communication as well?
Um. Yes.
Sorry, is there any goals and objectives, et cetera?
Yeah. Throughout my opinion, um, I would think Public Health would have a seat at that table on the economic develop, uh, economic recovery task force. But again, that, we have tasked, uh, the Economic Development Corporation with that responsibility. But yeah, I, is that what you're asking?
Yes. Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Vogel, I confirm that.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Um, we have considerate, item number four, consideration of public, uh, the OCC letter of support. I'll pull that document up in just a second. And I would move that the BOCC publish the, uh, letter that was drafted, uh, supporting the public health and the public health director and the emergency manager.
I'll, I'll second it.
The move is seconded to publish the letter that was drafted and sent to the Board of County Commissioners, uh, supporting the public health director and emergency manager. Discussion. As gentlemen know, I, I sent this letter out as a, really a starting point, but I never heard anything talk about significant changes, so, uh, I had not done anything with it since I sent it out.
I don't think, uh, you, you sent it out, that's correct, and that's why we're discussing this day or comment. And we do need to take a, uh, we need to make comments on it. We do need to rewrite it in order to reflect the actions we took last week when we set up the, uh, lines of authority and the public health agency, uh, because it's not written reflecting that. And so I would recommend that we take the, do the same thing we did with the MOU, uh, and that is take the letter, make comments and, and coordinate that between, uh, the three of us, if it's gonna be a Board of Commissioners' letter. And then, uh, bring that back and we could even discuss the result of that in our special meeting as an agenda item, I would propose, on the 27th.
Okay. Uh, clearly the intent was for this letter to be on behalf of the county commissioners, not the Board of Health.
That's true. I'm sorry. I think the county commissioners are meeting on the 27th, aren't we?
Yes, yeah, I just, uh, I'm thinking about your early comment there about reflecting the changes of the Board of Health, which I wasn't aware we had made any changes about that. But my comment was that this was not from the Board of Health, uh, it was from the commissioners.
That's correct, but, um, the, the way it's written, it did not reflect the, uh, uh, the roles and responsibility of the county commissioners vice, uh, the public health off the public health agency. And so that, that's all I wanted to, to make, uh, clear, is that it needs to reflect that and be written accordingly. Uh, and then, uh, if there's any other comments, we need to discuss those, uh, you know, we can do that.
Okay, I, I guess I just got caught up with the bill on that it needs to reflect the Board of Health. I, maybe I'm just missing the point, you know, I just don't.
I'm not saying that it, uh, it re. I gotta get the letter up.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a comment?
Uh, go ahead.
Thank you. I would, I would recommend that, sir.
Well, I'm sorry, I just didn't wanna cut Bill off while he was, I made that.
I'm sorry.
You're not cutting me off, but.
I'll wait, it's fine.
Uh, but if Bill's pulling up the documents, then I would allow, go ahead and your comment. Jay, and I, I just wanted to say I will come back to Bill, I'm not blowing him off.
That's fine, I'll wait, I'll wait if you like, 'cause my comment really is not.
Now, go, go ahead, Bill.
Okay, thanks, Bill. Um, I have a couple suggestions. First is, I would think we should read into the record what the letter actually says so that the public has an understanding of what it is we're, we're debating. And secondly, I have it in front of me, I read it again just now as we're speaking, um, I think this is a letter amending our, um, professionals for taking on a task that is unique. I think it's appropriate to come from the Board of County Commissioners, not the Board of Health, 'cause we are the county commissioners first. And, um, I would say, let's read it into the record and then if there's discussion as to how it should be worked, Smith, I think that would be appropriate.
Okay, thank you for those comments. Uh, go back to Commissioner Kanda and then we'll address, I'll address, uh, your comments, suggestions, Mr. Prince. Go ahead, thank you, Bill.
Thank, he, he brings up a good point, 'cause we haven't had a discussion on this at all. If you wanna have it now, that's fine. And it will help clarify it because in the third paragraph, it states that the county Board of Commissioners have a role in the pandemic, uh, that, that has us functioning as a policy group. Uh, that's not true, uh, but that's the whole point. We need to, we need to rewrite this in some areas in order to reflect what's actually going on.
Okay, I believe that they do function as a policy group, but that's my opinion. Uh, I, I, I think.
I'm not.
That's right, I think we should read it so people know exactly what we're talking about. So, uh, by consent or without objection, Nelson and I will, uh, read this and then we can have, uh, a further discussion. From the Board of County Commissioners, in an effort to maintain clear communication and transparency with our county, the Board of County Commissioners would like to state the following. The Board of County Commissioners is in full support of the public health director and the emergency manager, who are leading the county's response to COVID-19. They have been appointed to their positions because they possess the skills and expertise to do what is best for our county. Times like the COVID-19 pandemic are the reason we have appointed a public health director and an emergency manager to make difficult, sometimes unpopular, decisions. Their first priority in every situation is the health and safety of our county, uh, of our community, sorry. The Custer County Board of County Commissioners, BOCC, role in this pandemic is the same as it is in any emergency situation. The BOCC functions as a policy group. This means we advise the incident commander with our ideas, strategies, and even suggestions from members of our community. The BOCC all lead, also leads the county's economic recovery efforts. This includes forming a recovery task force composed of business leaders, the Economic Development Committee, Chamber of Commerce, and other business representatives. Now more than ever, our community's strength and resilience is being tested in new ways that force us to rethink how we support one another. We all need to come together in support of our community and the response agencies looking out for the safety and well-being of us all. It is vital for us as a community to follow state and local public health orders in order to return to normal as quickly as possible. Custer County must be unified in our efforts to stop the spread of COVID-19. We are truly stronger together. So, that was the proposed letter that I sent out. Um, I think the other thing, I mean, the, if, um, if we look at the emergency operations chart, the Board of County Commissioners, uh, is a, uh, policy group, uh, or part of a policy group. Uh, and then I think the other in the weeds, function of the BOCC as it pertains to this kind of, um, emergency would to provide whatever, uh, resources are necessary and that they have the capability to do, and I would be willing to add that language.
I like it the way it's written, but we can have that if you like.
Mr. Kanda? Your thoughts on the statement about the policy group?
Well. I'll tell you my thoughts. And, and the reason we need to consider, uh, what, what's happened. The, uh, the pandemic, I'm gonna go on here for a few minutes, you're gonna have to bear with me. You know, the pandemic has brought to light several things, uh, that we've taken for granted up till now. A couple of them are, are, uh, of note, uh, you know, uh, in our local, uh, area. First of all. We have, uh, un, yeah, and this was brought up earlier by Adrian Washington, we have unalienable rights under the Constitution that, uh, that can't be superseded. And then in a subsequent supremacy law that makes sure that even in a, in a, in a, uh, emergency, we cannot, uh, overlook our First Amendment rights, Second Amendment rights, et cetera, et cetera. And, and all of, uh, these things, they cannot be superseded by the, the state, the government, the local, uh, laws, and the elected officials have an obligation to take those into consideration when they're issuing, uh, orders. And, and by the way, uh, that the legislative office is, legislate orders, uh, and, uh, and are import, that can be enforced then. So the, uh. The elected officials take an oath to uphold that Constitution. Hired government employees don't. They make recommendations that the government elected officials can take into consideration when they do that. So no president, no governor, or county or municipal leader can, uh, issue orders that have not been legislated by the people, uh, representatives that are elected. The governor does that when he issues his orders or recommendations that come down. So that, that came to light and that's why it was very important to understand the differences between what the local Board of Health has from a responsibility point of view, or the public health agency. So we took for granted that that had been done when we set up this, uh, public health agency back in 2006, '07, '08. And we had thought that it had been established with an organizational plan and had, that had, was required by statute with, uh, clear lines of authority and duties, et cetera, et cetera. It wasn't until we took, uh, you know, the ball by the, the bull by the horns and enacted legislation last week, which cleaned that up so that, uh, the, uh, elected officials are there to, to take the responsibility. I, uh, I, I wanna commend both Alyssa and, uh, Meredith for standing tall on some confusion on who was in charge. In the end, it has to have the authority of the elected officials behind it. And I think that's got, uh, a lot of, uh, consternation that occurred in the county on who was in charge of doing what. And so that's why I want to. And so, that's why I want to take this, uh, letter and make it clear that, uh, that they acted in good faith, thinking that they, uh, had the ultimate authority to make the decision. They had the authority to execute the duties that were set up by, uh, um, by the statute. And I would recommend that, uh, anybody that has the ability to Google, uh, something up on the, on the internet, there's a pamphlet out issued by the Public Health Department, uh, that, that sets up a clear guide on how things should be operated and that kind of thing. And we're, we, we, the good news is, I want to make this clear to the public, that we understand that, and that we are, uh, going to, to co- uh, coordinate, and then make the, uh, decisions that support the recommendations from our Public Health Director, uh, and, uh, and make that decision on the risks versus the benefits that need to go forward as we develop the task force, uh, recommendations that we cover from this pandemic. So, in that light, I want to make sure that it's clear, uh, how, uh, what, to the public that we're, we're, uh, we support that. And that's why I wanted to straighten out, uh, some of the language which says, "Board of Commissioners does do that." Tom, you're absolutely right, we support that, those recommendations from the Public Health Agency, which has elected officials that are, uh, working and making the, the policies that are, in fact, legislation and, uh, you know, and orders that are enforceable by the county. So, that's all that I'm concerned about, I don't want to send the wrong message, that, uh, that we're continuing business as usual. Uh, we're, we've got a good coordination process that we've ironed out, that we all have, uh, worked together to make better. And in the end, I want to make sure that we, uh, we come up with a world-class Public Health Agency, and I think we're on the path to do that. So, I, I would like to have the opportunity, I want to wordsmith this document in this meeting, so, uh, we, we need to have it done, uh, with a lot of thought and coord- and coordination between the three of us. And input from, uh, others if necessary to make it be that way. So it's a document that's not just a reaction to public discontent, but a document that reflects understanding the problems and going, moving forward to be a better, a world-class, uh, organization that is, is leading the charge to come out of this pandemic, uh, with a good plan to go for economic recovery. So, that's my two bits. Uh, I don't want to, uh, just sign up and say, okay, this is a great thing that's out here, and immediately, there's lots of good reasons why I want to- it's, it's a very good document, uh, to, uh, to acknowledge this. The team, it's a team effort, it's not two people, it's not three, it's not the Board of Commissioners, it's the whole entire, uh, team, and that includes the, uh, the input of, of our elected officials and the people we work for, our elected representatives. And I think we've got that as our obligation. So there, I'm, I'm done talking now, that's just my input.
Okay, um, I would respond, I guess, uh, first of all, uh, I'm not interested in getting anybody's input except the Commissioners on a letter commending the job that the Public Health Agency and the Office of Emergency Management have done. This is not a public document, this is a-
No, I'm, 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 I don't, I don't understand what I- I didn't mean to plus that, um, I meant that it was our, to be, um, you're right. It's the elected officials, goddammit.
Hang on, could, could one person speak of that, please?
Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Thank you, I appreciate that, I thought you said you were done, I was gonna respond, I don't- Uh, I'm not interested in having the public input on this letter, or anybody else. This is not a team thing, this was a letter that could be represented on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners, nothing more than that. It certainly, uh, was, I don't see how a letter commending these two individuals has anything to do with the First or Second Amendments, for crying out loud. It's just a letter telling those two people via, however we decide to publish it in this county, that we support them. It's also telling the county that we support our Public Health and our Office of Emergency Management. I don't read anything else into it, other than that. Um, I think, hey, Mr. Canada, you're blurring the lines a little, I, there was a time when I wanted to, uh, interject and ask or remind you of the germane nature of the conversation of whether or not we published this letter, that's the motion. Um, if you're not comfortable with the way it's written, that's why it's on the agenda, let's have that conversation. It is gonna be between the three of us, nobody else gets to vote on it.
All right, let me respond to that. I agree, and I didn't mean to blur that, what I'm talking about is, in the letter, it needs to, uh, to take into account our obligation to, uh, account for the, uh, the, the way, the execution of the, uh, organization's doing things, and that we've, uh, taken the opportunity to clean that up, and, and it's important to understand that, um, that in the context of what we're congratulating them to. I'm not gonna commend them for something that I don't believe was in the, uh, the realm of their authority, that the public has misunderstood. So that's why I want to clear that, clarify that up, because they didn't have the authority to do that, and then, in fact, in our meeting, or with the Health Board later on, we're gonna try to clear, uh, clean up some of the backlog of things that, uh, that we need to do to come in, in accordance with the law. But, that, for another meeting. So I wanted to make sure that the public's not, uh, assuming that by, by condoning what's happened, or congratulating somebody for some of the things that we should have done, uh, together. That's the whole point of, uh, of the discussion. And so, if, um, if you want to go forward with it like it is, and, uh, and I just can't support it like it is, that's the point I'm trying to make.
Further discussion?
Yes, I'd like to make a comment, if I may, please.
Go ahead.
Um, Bill, with all respect, I think you're blurring this way further than what this letter's intended to do. The way I read it, it's a simple letter saying, ladies, you were thrust into a situation that no one would have foreseen. You stepped up to the bar. We at the time, we being the Board of County Commissioners and the Board of Health, were under the impression you had the total authority to make decisions. You made the best decision that you possibly could for this community. And I think, that's all this letter says, and I think that, we, hang on, and we as the Board of County Commissioners, I feel it is appropriate to commend them and let the public know that we are behind them, we appreciate what you're doing, and that we support their efforts in keeping this community safe, which is exactly what it says. And my other comment would be, if you have changes in this letter that you'd like to make, let's hear them.
Well, that, that was my point, that's exactly, what you said is exactly the way it ought to be written, Jay. Uh, we, we trust them, by, by a lack of understanding of how that it was set up, and think, uh, making an assumption, and they stood admirably tall doing that. Why aren't we saying it that way? It comes across like they've done everything fine up till now, and, and now, uh, we're gonna, and all the Commissioners are gonna stand by helping them. Uh, the fact that it is correct, Jay, I, I agree.
I think they did, I think they did do what they were supposed to do. I don't know that we've recreated anything, we, the only thing I think, without going back and looking at the minutes, the only thing I think we've done is agreed to schedule a deals, or a Board of Health meeting. I don't think we've changed anything. Maybe I'm wrong.
Oh, I beg to differ, Tom, and we don't need to discuss that now. We set up the actual, um, or- organization, and that resolution did that, and the, and, uh, Clint's, uh, point on the next resolution that he proposed, just goes that step further. That Public Health Director works for the Board of Health, not the other way around. And we've been operating, uh, you made the statement publicly, that they are in charge. They're in charge of executing the orders that come from the state, and bringing it to the attention of the Health Board, and together, they are to make an order for the county. They, the, the Public Health Director does not, did not have the authority to do that, without coordination and agreement. That didn't occur, and then-
And what does that have?
But that's what I've been pointing. You guys brought it up, I'm, I'm just telling you that, that it needed to be clar- clarified. And I commend them for operating in a, and, um, and with the, um, uh, with the way it was set up before, and that, and now, it's not gonna happen any longer. That's important for the public to understand. If, if that's gonna be what they should be blaming, if they got a problem with the orders that are published, it's the Board of Health, and the, uh, and, of the Public Health Agency at large, not one Public Health Director, or, or, uh, one Commissioner. It's the process that we didn't do, we didn't have. Uh, and so, I'm proud of the fact that we've got that straightened out now, and the public needs to understand that. So, when we're writing this letter, it needs to reflect, under the circumstances they had to deal with, exactly the way Jay stated it, uh, they, they stood tall, and, and a lot of heat was put on, needlessly, on Alyssa's shoulders as a Public Health Director, that shouldn't have been there, it, it, that would have been, uh, full support of, you know, it would have been an order that would have been issued and fought out. We could have had other, uh, discussions, that's why the Second Amendment came up. There's no reason, there wasn't an order from the state to shut down a church, ever. As a matter of fact, it was rewritten.
Of course there was!
No, there wasn't.
Of course, Jay. Absolutely, they don't have, I'm tell, when, when they say "social distancing", and when the state puts out stay-at-home orders, that's what it means. It doesn't mean, except for if your organization feels that you should be exempt from it. Yeah, I grant you, the Second Amendment gives you the right, the right to carry arms, gives you the right to freedom of assembly, gives you the right to, um, practice your religion as you choose. But not when it's a pandemic overriding that, then the public safety has to drop, so-
Oh, that, Jay, that's the governor-
I take exception to what you're saying.
I, I, I take exception to what you're saying. Bottom line is, the governor, he published his recommendations, not an order. His social systems, uh, and groups of X, [bleep] them out, and then essential businesses could stay open. Uh, they, uh, the church community came back to him, and he amended that order to include churches, uh, or a, uh, an exception, they're, they're protected. And so, that was recommended, so what he would do, then, he would-
That protective means?
The churches, it didn't say shut a church down and not allow them to, to meet. If they could meet in a room and maintain the, the proper spacing, the proper cleaning, and that the Health Board, uh, or the Public Health Board could get behind, then you can, you can meet, but you don't make a, 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 a one-size-fits-all order that was, had the, uh, the help, the, uh, power of legislation, meaning the, the elected officials, uh, working, or the, uh, elected, uh, for the, uh, public, that, to, uh, enact. And that, and that was an order that we have to fix. Those churches are allowed to meet, and, and as long, just like the, you can shop in a grocery store, you can go to church in a, in a room that is deemed to meet the criteria, the suggested criteria. So anyway, that, that's where we are. And I would like, as the public, to understand that the value that, uh, Alyssa and Meredith did valiantly, without, uh, uh, understanding that, and we've got that straightened up now.
Okay, gentlemen, uh, Chair's gonna call previous question. It does require a second, and it will end all debate, including public comment, if it passes, and we will move to an immediate vote. So the motion has been made for previous question, is there a second?
I'll second it.
They moved it seconded, to call previous question's not debatable. Uh, requires a two-thirds majority vote, all in favor, say aye.
Commissioner Grant's- Ha, hang, hang on, before I vote, I want to know what I'm voting on, could you reset, please?
You're voting on, you're voting on the motion of previous question, which, if passed, will end debate and move to an imme- immediate vote on the main motion.
Um, read the main motion.
The main motion is to publish the proposed letter from the Board of County Commissioners.
I, in all respect, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna vote nay, because I think it needs to be from the Commissioners, all three of us. I think Bill has legitimate concerns, and I think those concerns need to be addressed, so I'm gonna vote aye.
Hey, Commissioner Canada?
Nay.
Our vote's aye, motion fails, uh, one in favor, two against. Um, so in an effort to move forward, uh, I will again ask the Commissioners to review this letter, uh, submit any, uh, changes or whatever, and we will make another staff at it. The next item-
I appreciate that, thanks.
Is convening Board of Health on Wednesday, April twenty-second.
Uh, who, uh, go ahead. We, we don't have the time to publish an agenda, I, I can't agree to that, we need to do it on Thursday. It has to be a, an agenda, I, uh, and I can get Clint to, uh, confirm that, but we, we have some agenda items we need to put out, just, it's a regular meeting, it's, uh, uh, just like the county commissioners.
Well, I believe we do have time, uh, folks, that meeting, I'm not sure-
Well, what time of the day you're gonna have it, that's tomorrow, you're proposing.
Exactly, right.
Okay, so you want to do it at three in the afternoon?
Uh, I'm, I'm flexible, it doesn't matter to me. Mr. French?
Uh, I would like to do it at three o'clock tomorrow. Um, for numerous reasons, I have an, I have an amendment with upper and lower council amendments in the morning, that does not take precedence over this, however, it'll give us the twenty-four hour posting notice if we did it at three. As soon as this meeting doesn't last for four more hours.
Well, if we could post it-
That's a joke.
If we have a motion that passes, yeah, we could post it anytime, we don't have to wait till this meeting goes, so. Uh, yeah, I'm fine with three o'clock myself, uh, does not matter, uh, one bit to me, I, uh, I think we had talked last time about trying to avoid any conflict with, uh, council government.
I'm good with it anytime, as long as we can legally have the meeting, and so, I've, that, and I don't know what difference, uh, three o'clock in the morning makes for the afternoon, as opposed to nine, and the next day, same difference to me. Uh, might give, uh, might give people more time to, uh, think about it, I don't know.
Yeah, I've got a teleconference at nine on Thursday, and a teleconference at ten, I believe, ten o'clock on Thursday.
So Thursday would be the early, if you could do it, would be one, man, is that right?
Well, we, the, um, Emergency Management meeting, too.
But what takes precedence, you know, it's a matter of priorities, so, how, you know, I, I agree.
Commissioner Flower?
Go ahead.
Are we talking about the Board of Health meeting right now?
Yes, we're talking about-
The Board of Health. Okay.
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
Um, yeah, I, I don't, is the only reason I thought Wednesday afternoon was so that we could meet as soon as possible and not have a bunch of conflict.
This is Alyssa again, can I speak?
Go ahead.
Um, as far as the E O C goes, and, um, the Public Health Director at O E M, getting, putting these phases together, um, for the, for the Board of Health to review and adopt, if we were, if we wait too much longer, um, i.e. in the Thursday or Friday, uh, it's gonna take longer to get what we have to the state for approval. So the sooner we can get those thoughts put down on paper and submitted to the state, the better. Very, thank you.
Um, Attorney Smith, I have a question for you, sir.
Unmute, Clint.
Okay, I'm sorry, I was talking at you, and nobody was talking back, so. Uh, so I have a point of inquiry here for you, um, I, I believe that if we're gonna schedule a Board of Health meeting, we need to- a Board of Health meeting, we need to recess this Board of County Commissioners meeting and convene a Board of Health meeting and then set a time. Is that correct?
Actually, that would be the correct procedure. And because you would be doing the setting it as the Board of Health, not as the Board of County Commissioners. What I was going to suggest to you is for an agenda for this meeting tomorrow at 3:00, the first order of business should be appointment of officers, because you have to decide who's going to be the chairman and vice chair. Secondly, I think you should consider the proposed resolution I submitted. And then, third item on the agenda should be report from the Public Health Director, which, that's wide open. Then, you can talk about anything regarding the Public Health Orders and everything else.
And that would include other agenda items as well, I would think.
Well, I mean, I think you, just those three basic agenda items would be sufficient to get the organizational part of it to determine the officers for the Board of Health. Secondly, to ratify the appointment of the Public Health Director. And then, third, to talk to the Public Health Director with whatever issues you want to meet. You can try to go into more detail if necessary, but I think that would be broad enough to cover what you want to talk about tomorrow.
Okay, let me ask you this, then, because one of the pressing items that you've heard already is to clarify how the churches can operate. And I would like to have that discussion as an agenda item. So, does that pick, when do we put the agenda item together? After we [bleep] mean that the Board of Health today?
And is, who's, the statute says that the Public Health Director shall, or does not shall, but can serve as the Secretary of the Board of Health. Kara is not the Administrative Assistant or Secretary for the Board of Health. So, it would have to either be Alyssa or somebody else you designate.
Right. And that was another point that I was going to make, but that I thought we were going to discuss in the Board of Health meeting, right, as the officer.
Well, that's not an officer. That's just somebody who's going to be taking the minutes...
Okay, so then that should be a...
Would be a recording secretary, not a, not an executive member, not a member of the Executive Committee.
Right, not a board member.
We'd be probably better off calling it a clerk to the Board of Health instead of a secretary.
I think that that just referred to the secretary is why he said secretary.
But it does have to be a recorded meeting. So, if you want Kelly to do that part, I think if she could...
Or give the tools to Alyssa to do it. That's who we select as, which is the one that's designated by the statute.
Well, I don't think Alyssa...
I don't believe it's designated, is it? I think it's a possibility.
As may, as may.
Yeah, correct. But, I mean, Alyssa's going to be wearing two hats if she tries to do that. She's going to be trying to take minutes and recording and also reporting. I think it would be better to have somebody else serve in that capacity.
That's true.
Yeah. So, to that end, I would move that we take a recess and reconvene as Board of Health.
I'll second that.
Been moving to second it to take a recess, Board of County Commissioners, and reconvene as the Board of Health. Given the fact, let's see, that we've been at it for two hours and 14 minutes, I would say that we take, I'm going to rephrase my motion to say we take a five-minute recess and then reconvene as a Board of Health at 11:19. Is there a second?
I'll second. Well, okay, thank you.
All right. Been moving to second it to take a five-minute recess and reconvene as Board of Health at 11:19. Discussion. During none, proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Uh, hey, Tom, did we finish the vote on the date and time? Was that going to be a Board of Health discussion, then?
That's correct. That's why we're going to convene Board of Health.
Right, that's the point, is to make sure that was up there. Okay, good.
Yeah. Okay. All right. 11:19, we'll be back. He stands in recess. Ms. Candy, or Ms. Camper, I have a question for you.
Okay.
According to my notes, we have a motion on the table in the Board of County Commissioners that's probably going to be ruled out of order, because I don't think it's the authority of the BOCC to set meeting dates and times for the Board of Health. So, I would just ask you to remind me when we get back to the Board of County Commissioners meeting that we address that pending motion.
Well, you could do it now, couldn't you, Tom? Because we are at 4:00.
No, we're in recess. Motion was to go into recess at 11:14.
I understand that, because you can do, well, either way, I guess it works. You're trying to be efficient, that's all.
And, Tom, I, if there was a motion made, I missed that. I thought you were just, you guys were just discussing about the meeting, but I didn't. If there was a motion made, I missed it.
Okay. And that's why I'm asking. Maybe we never got to that point. We were just discussing.
Yeah.
So, maybe we don't have a pending motion. We'll deal with that when we get back to the BOCC meeting.
Okay.
Thank you. So, I'll call the Board of Public Health, or Board of Health Meeting to Order. Let the record show that today is April 21st, 2020, and the time is 11:28 a.m. So, I believe our first order of business, gentlemen, maybe the only order of business, would be to consider setting a time and date for the next Board of Health meeting.
That's correct. So, I'll make the motion. And that would be to, I move that we convene a Board of Health meeting on Wednesday at 3:00 in the afternoon. And how we want to handle, like, yeah, I guess that's all we need to say for that.
Okay.
Second, that's clear.
Yeah. April 22nd. Is there a second?
Second.
Been moving to second it to schedule a Board of Health meeting on Wednesday, April 22nd, at 3:00 p.m. Discussion. I would make the assumption, I guess I'll clear it up so we're not assuming, that this will be a teleconference meeting. Is that your intent, maker of the motion?
Doesn't have to be. It was, because we're operating with this, it was just by de facto, it would be a telecon.
All right, thank you. Further discussion? During none, proceed to vote. Well, you know what, before we do that, I guess we'll see how everything plays out. I feel like right now, as things stand, it's appropriate to ask Kelly if she will be available as a historical recorder of those meetings.
That, that would be appropriate.
Uh, yes, I will.
Okay, thank you. Teleconference at 3:00 on Wednesday. Further discussion? During none, proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Will this be a public meeting? Will this be open to the public?
Yes, it will be a public meeting. Ms. Kara will ask her to prepare the agenda for that meeting, and she will include the phone number and the code at the top of the agenda, as we have been doing, yes. Yes, those Board of Health meetings are open to the public, or they're public meetings.
Correct.
Tom, is Kara going to post this, then?
Uh, I would request that of her. Let's get her on.
Yes, excuse me, I can post that, yes. If I get the agenda, I'll go up to the office and get it made up.
Okay.
And Clint?
Get the teleconference call and a code for that, publish that on the agenda today.
And Clint, would you get her the, your proposed items to consider? And I'll add a couple as well, or whoever needs to add any other things we want to consider in that Health Board. And we need to do it before 3:00 today.
I will email her the things I suggested right now. I looked in my email. I don't know that I received what you're talking about, Bill. So, let me look again, but...
Received what?
Well, you said some resolu, proposed resolution.
Clint did it. Clint's got the resolu.
I'm saying, Commissioner Candy, you mentioned that Clint had a proposed resolution. I'm just stating that I don't believe I've received it.
Oh, okay. It, I did.
It's been this morning. It's been this morning, Tom.
Yeah, okay. Well, I'm looking right now. So...
Came in at 9:06 last night. I'm sorry. I'll follow it to you if you like.
Um, whoops. Uh, yeah, I do not have it.
I just followed it to you.
Clint, do you show, do you show me being on your recipient line?
I, yeah, I sent it to all three of you, and I think Kelly, and I'm not sure who else I sent it to. I think to Alyssa and...
I have it in front of me. It was from Clint to Tom, Bill, Jay, C.C., Kelly.
Um, and the time was yesterday at 9 something p.m.?
9:06 last night. And I just re-followed it, didn't you?
Okay. Uh, yeah, I did a search for Clint on my inbox. I did not receive it. So, thank you for sending that.
Sure.
Um, so, I, I agree with Council's recommendations of putting those items of business on the agenda. So, unless there's objections, I think we do need, Ms. Kara, this is kind of directed towards you as well as the Commissioners, consideration or just appointment of Board of Health Officers. Consideration of proposed resolution. Do we need a subject line on that, Clint?
No, I think that's good enough.
Okay. And a report from Public Health?
Public Health Director.
Okay, Director of Public Health, yep, thank you. Commissioner Candy, do you have anything else?
Yeah, I will have, and I'm going to write it down and send it in to Kara. I've got word it right.
Okay, pertaining to...
There may be a couple things, but for sure, we're going to pertain it to the review of the current Health Orders that are out, and resolution or amending considerations. I'll write that up.
Okay, review, review of current Health, okay? Anything else?
There may be, I'll give us some thought from me. I don't know, Jay, you got anything else?
No, I don't.
Okay, um...
Other comment?
Uh, we're a little out of the realm, but I'll allow it. Go ahead.
Could we put possibly on the agenda a review of Public Health Order 2004, as it refers to faith-based organizations?
That was going to be, which is the part of the, when I said Health Orders, that was to be inclusive. So, we'll specifically state it that way, too. But I write it up.
And Commissioner Prince, you indicated you did not have any items to add to the agenda?
That is correct, sir.
Uh, can you give me just a second? I did receive the proposed resolution. I'd like to scan it just for a second.
Hey, I'll be right there. I'm on the phone. Right there.
I'm here.
Okay. Um, so, I wonder if you could do a little research to determine if, I think I know the answer, but I'd like to have legal opinion, if the Board of County Commissioners has to serve as Board of Health?
No, no, they don't. You can appoint.
I don't believe they do.
No.
So, I would also ask that maybe, if you have an opportunity, do a little research about the process of sitting a new Board of Health.
I was actually just looking at that. I can just very briefly tell you that the Board of County Commissioners can appoint a three-person Board of Health if you elect not to do it yourselves or to relinquish that. You would appoint, just like you appoint members of other boards, you would ask for letters of interest, review the applications, perhaps interview the applicants if you wanted to, and then appoint the three people you think would be best qualified to serve as a Board of Health in the future.
Actually, that, it's not, partly because if you do do that, it's really designed for a district and/or big counties. You can appoint other than the Commissioners, but one Commissioner has to remain on that Board. Not all three can abdicate their, or delegate their authority. And that's what we're doing. Have to be careful. We got to make sure it's legal, because you're acting as the representative of an elected official.
That's exactly why I asked for legal opinion on that. Certainly, can you cite the statute builder you're referring to?
Yeah, I'll have to look it up. I've got it here. I'll read it to you. Okay, it says, here, and I'll tell you what statute it is.
Yeah, if you'd cite the statute first, please.
It's statute 25-1-511. They, Public Health Agency Funds and Treasurer, it starts off with that. You have a, the county treasurer shall serve as the Public Health Agency's treasurer. It talks about the Health Director, the local Board of Health shall estimate total cost. It talks about that. And then, it goes into county agencies. Each county Board of Health shall consist of at least five members. This is on the agencies that are banded together in small counties. Then, it has, the terms of initial appointments are staggered for five years if you're appointing somebody. Members of the county Board of Health shall reside within the county where the Public Health Agency is located. No business or professional group or governmental entity shall constitute a majority of the Board if you have more than three. Counties of less than a population of 100,000, a three-member Board may be appointed. The Board of Commissioners may designate itself as the Board of Health if there is not a separate Board of Health prior to the date that this was enacted. District agencies, each district agency Health shall consist of a minimum of five. Members of the Board shall be residents, et cetera, et cetera. Then, it says electing Board. Once the Board of Health is established, the President and other officers should be elected at an organizational meeting. The Public Health... The Public Health Director may serve as secretary to the boards, at the boards' discretion, but shall not be a member of the board. Regular meetings of the Board of Health must be held at least once every three months. Special meetings may be called with three days' notice, or in the case of an emergency, twenty-four hours' notice by the Public Health Director, the president of the board, or by majority, uh, or by the majority of the members of the board. Um, adopting bylaws, you do that. The county or district board may adopt at any time and amend bylaws. Uh, then it states, uh, in twenty-five dash one dash five oh eight, that members of the County Board of Health may be appointed by the County Commissioners. Furthermore, members of the district board, talk about appointments committee, uh, must be comprised of one Commissioner from each county, uh, comprising that district.
Right, but that's for a district, right? And that doesn't apply to us.
Doesn't apply, and it says because local boards of health may play a vital role in the public health. But I don't know, let's see here. It says, uh, recommends that board membership reflect the, if this is bigger, bigger boards, reflect the diversity of the county. And, uh, and then it states that a public health, uh, direct, the selection of public health directors licensed, uh, to practice in Colorado, it's a physician, public director candidate, then there's a non-physician, state master's degree or public in, in public health or related discipline, uh, within that, et cetera. So it goes down the, the criteria.
Right. Well, when I looked at that statute, I didn't see that it required that a Commissioner sit on the Board of Health. Maybe I missed it.
Send one, and that's... Go ahead, Clint. I'm looking for it.
Uh, no, it, it does for a three-person Board of Health or a county board, it's not part of a district board.
Right.
Be three other individuals, not a Commissioner.
That's true, it was, uh, yep.
My understanding was if it was a district-wide, then they needed one rep from each, uh, Board of County Commissioners, but in a county Board of Health, I did not see that.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it. Thanks, Bill, appreciate that. Um, so I would like to include an agenda item, uh, Kara, consideration of, uh, an alternate Board of Health.
Okay, I have it.
Thank you. And as Commissioner Candy indicated, uh, we definitely need to post that before three o'clock today because I believe we are in a state of emergency which allows us to do a twenty-four-hour post instead of, uh, seventy-two hours. Would you gentlemen agree with that?
Absolutely.
Counsel, you okay with that interpretation?
Yes, I think this certainly qualifies under the present circumstances.
And another question for you, Counsel, um, from what your research has indicated, are you lead counsel for the Board of Health?
I, not automatically. You could certainly appoint me as legal counsel for the Board of Health.
And I would request we also put that on the agenda, consideration of appointing, uh, Counsel to the Board of Health.
But first, I'll be asking for more money for doing that.
Oh, I, I took that automatically.
Okay.
I've already got my arguments for that in place. I'm sorry, I've already got my arguments against that.
Okay.
Ms. Kara, did you get those last two?
Yes, sir, I sure did.
Thank you.
Let me make a comment here, too, for everybody. This, uh, there's a great publication that's put out by the Colorado Department of Public Health and Education, uh, that is a pocket guide for local boards of health. And this is, uh, in accordance with the Colorado Public Health Act of two thousand and eight. And it has all the appropriate, uh, statutes that apply. It also describes the boards of directors, uh, powers and duties, uh, a lot of things that are easy to get to rather than jumping into the, yeah, it's, uh, you know, documents. It's a very good guide. Talks about financial oversight, the, uh, uh, the powers and duties of the Public Health Director, uh, Board itself, et cetera. And it references a lot of other resources. Good guy.
Okay, Public Health and Environment.
Called, uh, it's called, this is a pocket guide for local health, for boards of health, it's the title on it. Published by the Office of Planning, Partnerships and Improvement underneath the Colorado Department of Health and Education.
Okay, is it the Colorado Public Health and Education, or is it...
Called the C D P H E. It's under the Office, the C D P H E, and it's the Office of Planning, Partnerships and Improvement that published this, that worked that for the, uh, C D, uh, it's a, it's a directorate underneath, uh, C D H E.
Uh, Office of Planning and...
Oh, C D P H E, and it's the Office of Plant, Partnership and Improvement.
Planning, Partnership and Improvement, okay. Thank you.
Bill, could you send it to us if it's possible?
Sure, I'll, uh, I'll type it up in a note to you.
Thank you. Do you have the, do you have that pamphlet digitally, Bill?
I think so, I printed it, uh, I may have printed it off the internet, I can't remember. I have it all digitally.
All right, I can look it up, yeah. C D P H E is public, uh, Public Health and Environment, was all I would say.
Right, Environment, I'm sorry, I ended the...
I ended with the Office of Planning, Partnership and Improvement, that's what I was struggling with, so thank you for clarifying that. Anything else, gentlemen, for the agenda on, uh, for the Board of Health for tomorrow at three P.M.?
Not for me.
Okay, uh, Ms. Kara?
Yes, sir.
So if you could monitor that, I know Commissioner Candy is gonna submit some additional stuff, but let's, let's have that agenda be closed at three P.M. We'll not take any additions after that.
Okay, that sounds good, I will do it.
Thank you. Anything else, gentlemen, to come before the Board of Health at this time?
No, Commissioner Prince.
Commissioner Candy?
Agreed.
Nor do I. Uh, without objection, the Chair will adjourn, uh, the Board of Health meeting at eleven forty-two, April twenty-one, twenty-twenty. Meeting is adjourned? Thank you. Uh, Chair will reconvene the Board of County Commissioners meeting at eleven forty-two. So, I think Kelly was actually correct. I just wanted to follow up and make sure we did not bail on something that was on the table for a pending motion, but I did not make a motion. Either one of you gentlemen make a motion to your recollection to schedule a B.O.H. meeting?
No, I think we discussed doing that, and that, I think we assumed that we were making a motion, maybe, but there was no actual motion from...
Okay, my point is, Mr. Prince, you agree? Um, yeah, I kinda heard a different length, but I don't have a big issue. What you said just before we went on break, you moved that we convene, we, we, um, take the recess and then reconvene as the Board of Health.
That's correct, qualified. But I was asking, did you make a motion to schedule a date and time for the Board of Health?
I did not.
Okay, nor did I, and Commissioner Candy...
For tomorrow? Yes, I made that motion.
During the Board of Health or during the, during the B.O.C.C. meeting?
I thought it was during the Board of Health, I probably got it wrong.
Okay, let me, let me back up, 'cause I'm probably not being very succinct here. Um, I'm asking all three Commissioners if at the, right before we took a recess of the B.O.C.C. meeting, did we have a pending motion on the floor? Kelly says no, I don't recollect it either. But I wanted to ask each of you if you felt like you had a motion on the floor before we went into recess.
I do not believe so.
Nor do I. And... Okay, all right, so good, we got that cleared up. I just didn't wanna go off the rails here and leave something pending that we shouldn't have. Uh, is there any other business that should come before the B.O.C.C. meeting prior to adjournment?
I'd like to look.
Go ahead. Uh, it's a good point, thank you, sir. Uh, before we get to public comment, don't let me forget that. I just wanted to recap then that, uh, we have a stakeholder teleconference today at one thirty, is that correct?
That's correct.
That, uh, I don't have, I don't have a number for that there. Don't know why, I don't, didn't write it down.
I don't have it either.
I'll make sure I get it through everyone.
Okay, uh, and does that number change, or is that a standing assigned code from, uh, platform provider? Do you know? I thought the number stayed the same as long as it was the same meeting, but maybe not.
I'm not sure. Vernon, are you on? Can you speak to that?
Send it to us anyway.
Yeah, we'll send it out.
Okay, thank you. Uh, and then, of course, the, uh, is there, let me look here. Was there a policy group meeting rescheduled for Wednesday or no?
Yeah, there was a policy group that was rescheduled for, I, well, I believe it was for one o'clock tomorrow so that we could have policy group before the three o'clock, um...
And I've actually got two o'clock written, but if it's...
Yeah, that sounds right. I think you're right, it is, it's two o'clock.
Okay, okay. And then, uh...
The host has joined the conference.
Hello, this is Vernon.
Yeah, hi, Vernon.
Hi, I'm sorry, I just, I, I pushed the wrong button picking up the phone to, uh, answer your question, and I apologize.
That's okay, nope. So we have a stakeholder meeting at one thirty tomorrow, uh, a policy group meeting at two o'clock, and then a Board of Health meeting at three.
We can use the same code for, for each of those, yes.
Okay, all right. Probably better send that out, uh, regardless, if that's okay? Whoever's doing that will use, post it for the Board of Health, or at least get it to Kara so she can get the right number and code on for the Board of Health meeting, Vernon?
I'll get that out to her shortly.
Okay. And then, uh, not really relevant, I've got upper arm workforce meeting Thursday at nine. Is that the meeting you were talking about, Jay?
No, I have an upper arms, I hear county governments at one tomorrow, but I will, I, I will defer at this point, um, so...
Okay.
I'll be on with us.
Okay, uh, and that's, that workforce meeting's at nine, so it's not gonna conflict. And then we have a B.O.C.C. workshop on the twenty-fourth?
Correct, that's at nine.
At nine A.M. on twenty-fourth. Uh, stakeholders meeting at one thirty, is that right? Alyssa, on the twenty-fourth?
I think so, yes.
I don't have that. Could we send that out again, please? I'm missing these.
I am.
Stakeholder meetings were all scheduled for Tuesdays and Fridays at one thirty until further notice.
I thought that was, uh, policy guys.
No, policy group is Monday and Thursday.
Except this week, we're doing it on Wednesday.
Right, except for this week.
Get them, get them put out, that, that'll help.
Um, and then... Uh, and then on the twenty-seventh, uh, we have, oh, you know what? Did we, we haven't formally acted on that meeting on the twenty-seventh either. So, Kelly?
Yes?
Would you confirm that we did not, uh, set a meeting date for the twenty-seventh for the B.O.C.C.? I don't believe we have, but I'll defer to you.
You have not, but I didn't think, and this is a question for Clint, I didn't think you need to make a motion to set a meeting. I thought you could just set a meeting, but you didn't set a meeting.
We do not have to. The Chair can call for a special meeting.
I thought that's what we agreed to when we discussed this.
Well, we talked about it, but we never did it. That's, I'm glad we went through this. So, um, gentlemen, I would call for a special meeting on Monday, April twenty-seventh, at nine A.M. Uh, without objection, let the record show that meeting has been scheduled. And then, uh, Ms. Kara, we definitely got, we need to get posting of that as well. Ms. Kara, are you still on?
I am, I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Yes, uh, we need to post the meeting for Monday, April twenty-seventh, at nine A.M.
Yes, sir.
And while we're on the subject, gentlemen, agenda items?
That was to discuss the task force, uh, results, or recommendations, I should say.
Right, I would say we are going to consider the recommendations of the, uh, Economic Development Committee to staff that task force, is that how you gentlemen see it?
Yep. And the roles and whatever we said.
Right, yes, thank you.
I would like to... They put that written.
Pardon me?
Kelly wrote that down that way.
The motion?
I think so, didn't you, Kelly?
I'm sure she did, yeah. It was to, uh, take the recommendations of the, consider the recommendations of the Economic Development Corporation for staffing the, uh, task force as well as consideration of their, uh, goals and objectives of that task force.
If I may, Mr. Chair, I might also add, if I may, um...
Go ahead.
The letter of commendation to, um, Director of Public Health and Office of Emergency Management to finalize that and submit it.
Okay, uh, letter of commendation, a letter of support.
Uh, letter of commendation. The way I'm saying, Bill is, Bill, what I'm suggesting, though, is if you have, you know, your comments, maybe we could have those ready for Monday so that we can debate those and come up with a letter that we'll put out.
Hey, do you wanna, uh, circulate those suggestions between the three of us before that meeting? Or are we just gonna try to do it in the meeting? It gets too, you know, it gets pretty drug out. There's ways to handle it, I think, efficiently if we, if we pass a letter around to each other first.
Yeah, I would prefer that ahead of time, at least so we...
Yeah, I don't have a problem.
See if you can process it, sure.
Yeah, I have no issue with that.
Uh, Kara, you, you good still? We have two agenda items?
Yes, I'm good.
Okay, consideration of letter of commendation second, and, uh, consideration of the Economic Development Corporation's recommendations first. Question for Counsel? Clint, are you on? What are you supposed to be doing, you guys?
Trying to find the unmute button. Trying to find the unmute button.
Is this term, grounds for termination? This guy just getting off of a meeting? Hey Clint, are you on? Okay, well, um, I was gonna ask him if he felt we needed to, especially during.
I'm back, I'm back, I'm sorry.
Just couldn't hear which question we had.
I love it. Oh my gosh. Hey, uh, Clint, I was gonna ask you, do you see any value in including on a standing agenda item during this COVID-19? Board of Health, uh, meeting being on the agenda if needed as we do executive session?
Um, since the Board of Health is a separate political entity, I think they, it would need to be a separate agenda and a separate notice.
Okay.
I mean, you could put it on that you, you know, that it's gonna be done in conjunction with the commissioners meeting, but I think it needs to be published separately and a separate agenda as well.
Okay.
That's right. And, and we should have discussions regarding, uh, you know, that just, that, and other than the way we handle upper arc, for example. We reference things that we're working with the Public Health Department. Or the Public Health Agency, I should say.
Did you say we shouldn't have those comments?
No, I think we should. I'm just saying we shouldn't get wrapped into mixing the two in the same meeting. Then, then adjourn and make sure it's clear.
Right, clearly, I agree, yeah. Okay, uh, anything else, gentlemen, um, for the orders of the day?
Public comment.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Anything else before we go to public comment? Okay, uh, does anybody have any public comment before we adjourn?
Um, yes, uh, Chairman Flower, this is Elliot Jackson, uh, again. Um, I believe Commissioner Prince made some allusion to, uh, summarizing some of what the governor's meeting had to say about health parameters that need to be set up before opening and, and I'll, you know, just, just for the record, I'm not speaking really as a reporter for the Tribune. I'm interested, vitally interested in this question as the program manager for the West Cliff Center for the Performing Arts. You see, our entire business model depends on people actually feeling safe congregating in a public space. So, to my mind, any part of economic recovery, I mean, you know, you can say, yeah, the county's open for business, but, eh, we're not gonna reopen if we don't feel convinced that there are protocols in place, um, that, that strictly follow what the governor, uh, has put down. So just, um, just for me personally, I'd be very interested to know, um, Mr. Prince, if you can summarize just briefly, um, what did the governor have to say on the subject yesterday?
Okay, well, thank you for the question and I'd also like anybody else who heard the governor to jump in, um, just in case I missed something that the governor said or you feel that I'm not portraying that correctly. Let me answer specifically your question about the performing arts and meeting in a larger congregation. Uh, the governor spoke about, um, uh, phasing in a slow recovery, economic recovery for, um, county, or for the state is what he was really talking about. I absolutely agree with, uh, uh, Mr. Mullins when he said the governor did say that we could, um, uh, counties could submit, uh, plans that they would like to implement that may be more germane to that particular, that particular, um, county than the whole state. And that's something that I know Alyssa and Meredith have been working on. Um, but statewide, my understanding was that the stay-at-home order expires, um, April 26th. On April 27th, um, the, and actually he said May 1. He, he first had it April 27th, then he moved to May 1, the opening of, um, of businesses. Uh, however, it's entirely up to the decision of the business whether they choose to open or not, if they feel safe or not. And that falls back on your performing arts, um, you know, a larger congregation, um, was something he specifically talked about. If there was gonna, going to be a new opening on May 1, it would include the requirements for social distancing, cleaning and other precautions that the state took. Um, specifically, uh, he mentioned hairdressers and that type of thing. And he said, um, one person at a time in the salon, uh, was something that he was recommending. Uh, I'm looking at my notes. He also said that restaurants, um, it would not be open to the public other than takeout and delivery as is in place right now until sometime in the middle of May. He referenced middle of May and then he also referenced May 15th. Uh, but it really was predicated upon the results of putting businesses, if there was a intention, I didn't say it specifically, was if there was a sniff and spike in COVID-19 cases. Um, he may not be willing to open restaurants on the 15th. Again, may take other precautions if necessary. That's basically what I got and I would ask anybody in the audience who has also heard it, if you have any comments. I would love to hear if I missed anything or if you feel that I didn't hear it properly.
Okay, thank you. Other public comment?
Oh, just, just, I'm sorry, uh, Mr. Chairman, it's Elliot again. Just one last thing. First of all, I wanted to say, um, thank you, uh, Jay, that was very succinct. And, um, I'll go and I'll listen to the governor's meeting myself with what you said in mind. Um, and a general question, I guess, would be directed at the EDC or at the board. Um, so say a church or, you know, our theater or something wants to reopen. Are we going to have to submit a plan, for example, to, uh, local health authorities? Do you have to come and, and inspect, uh, the arrangements that we've made? Do we have to describe them? And it, I guess, I would be really curious about what the process of opening up for us would actually look like and appreciate some guidance from the county.
Uh, let, I would like to address that first if I could. If that would be the intent Elliot, and that's what the current boards that I've looked at are, are processing today. They actually wanna have a plan. You gotta make sure it conforms with, uh, both the state and our county guidance. Our county guidance can vary as, uh, as appropriate for the situation here, so that is true. Now, what is going on is I'm glad you brought it up. There's pre-scripted and post-scripted kinds of things. You can either get a, a plan approved ahead of time, these are proposals that, uh, that are done in other counties. And sort of like a restaurant, you get a certificate that says you, if you do these things and adhere to them, you're certified to cook food. Or you can do it, um, during. You can have inspections that you agree to that can come in and, uh, inspect as time evolves after you set a plan up. So that would be part of what we'll discuss and, as a public health agency, uh, to understand what we would do and of course, uh, it would require boots on the ground to understand each church or each, uh, in your case, uh, how you're gonna set up the audience and how you're gonna keep the bathrooms clean, blah, blah, blah. That help?
This is Alyssa. Can I speak to that please?
Uh, go ahead.
Yeah. Um, so, um, I realize that, well, I'm not gonna say that. Um, we have plans already made, started, um, that we will present to the Board of Health tomorrow regarding, um, what those, um, checklists, if you will, will look like. Um, and we will get those out. That's part of the reason why we wanted to do the meeting on Wednesday so we could get those guidelines out to all the businesses. And my proposal to the Board of Health is going to be that we go through and look at every single individual business, look at their plans and give them a certificate that they can hang in their front door if they want to saying that they have been, um, you know, passed to open their business and that they have a plan that meets the criteria of public health.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Other public comment?
A question?
Uh, go ahead.
Is there, is there a way to get a copy of these plans or proposals before tomorrow's meeting?
No, no, because they'll be voted on tomorrow.
They're not public until they've been approved by the BOH. Okay. Um, I have a question for Alyssa and Meredith, if either or both are on, obviously I know Alyssa is. Can you give us an update on the numbers out of Fremont County?
The numbers of, um, cases?
Particularly the number of cases and the number of fatalities. I have not heard or been able to get that the last couple of days.
Yeah, hang on one second and I'll pull it up.
Thank you. Uh, did I say Fremont County? I'm sorry, I meant JP County Alyssa, if I said Fremont. I meant JP.
Okay, no worries. Give me one second.
Okay, Commissioner Prince, you had something?
Well, I was just gonna add that for JP County, you have to be a little careful 'cause the numbers are large, but they're skewed. They had a very significant outbreak in a nursing home that had mixed numbers of, um, if, if you're thinking countywide, it's really not as large because it's so many in one.
Right.
But I just want the government.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, I think, uh, it was Columbine, uh, nursing home and they had like 57 positive cases expecting 41 deaths, possibly.
Okay, so there's 37 positive cases in JP County with four fatalities.
Oh, wow. So then the earlier numbers were just not accurate, were they?
Correct. This is, this is as of four o'clock yesterday afternoon.
I'm glad I asked then. Okay. Uh, and are you on a site where you could look up Fremont County real quick or no?
Yeah, I sure am. Um, Fremont County has not had any deaths.
Okay.
And their case count is 11.
Okay. All right, thank you.
When we look at, just for your, just for your like situational awareness, I guess, when we look at other counties, we look at Delta County as the most similar to Custer County as far as, um, demographics and population.
Which county? Alyssa, I missed that.
Delta.
Oh, Delta, okay, gotcha.
Delta County, um, and they currently have 25 cases.
25, okay.
Opposed to our two.
So they'd be most comparable to us as far as demographics, size, population, so on so forth.
But not necessarily, but it's not necessarily, uh, geographically with highways and whatever that may impact it. They're, they're a bit different.
Sure, I mean, they're not obviously gonna be exactly the same as us, but as far as what, when we look at, and we do this on a regular basis with state, um, reports and things that we do through public health, their demographics, their population, and their, the fact that they don't have a hospital, they have, um, one clinic as well, they're, they're the most similar to Custer County.
Right.
It would be interesting to, uh, to know what the, uh, adjoining counties to them, uh, are. So, you know, where, where you have the most opportunity to catch it. Like, for example, for us, we've got 12 down there with a heavy population of potential cases.
Correct. Um, correct me if I'm wrong, it's been a while since I've been over there. Does Highway 50 run through Delta? Is there a big intersection right there at Delta?
Yes, uh, sorry, um, Commissioner Flower, there is. I used to live in Delta County. This is Elliot. Um, they do have a hospital, um, uh, Delta County, uh, yes, yeah, Highway 50, Highway 50 runs up from Montrose through Delta. And then Highway 92, State Highway 92, comes down through the North Fort Valley and makes that intersection that you're talking about.
Okay, yeah, thanks. I appreciate that.
Okay, any other comments, guys? We adjourn if not, I think, don't we Tom?
Uh, yeah, I actually, I actually have a public comment. Hold on, just hold on a second. So Elliot, you say there is a hospital in Delta?
Yes, there is a Delta County hospital. The other, it, it serves, uh, it serves the whole county or did at least, uh, up until a couple of years ago. But they're, um, actually probably closest in terms of, of demographics really is, is, uh, uh, the situations that you'd have in say Hotchkiss or Peonia where, yeah, there is, there is a clinic and there is a hospital, but you are quite a distance away from, I mean, you're, you're a 30 mile ambulance ride from Peonia to the Delta County Hospital.
Okay, got it.
So not dissimilar, in fact, to, to our situation here.
Right, okay. Correct. Okay, very good. Thank you. Appreciate that input. Uh, other public comment? Jackie Bubus? Go ahead.
Okay, I have some concerns about some of the things that were said earlier and I'd just like to put them out there for the record. Um, Tom, when you were talking about the letter of whatever it is, commendation, whatever it is, um, you said you weren't interested in getting anyone's input. That this was a letter from the commissioners and not a public document. Well, everything you do is a public deal and everything you do should reflect your constituents. So I'd be interested to know if you believe that your, that this reflects your constituents' opinions. Uh, because there is a great deal of difference of opinion on this subject. You don't have to answer. Uh, I know you, you can talk about it later.
Yeah.
But I am concerned about that. Uh, the other thing I'm very concerned about is, is Mr. Prince stating that public safety trumps the Constitution. There is nowhere in the Constitution that says public safety trumps the rights of the American, uh, citizens that are God-given, not given by the Constitution. So that's all I have to say.
Okay, thanks. Well, I'll, and then Commissioner Prince, too, to also allow that. Um, the letter of support will, if approved, become a public document, yes. Uh, I would stand corrected there. When I said it's not a public document, I meant it was not a document, uh, it was not designed or the intention was not to be a document that the public had any input on. Uh, I will stand by that. I drafted, uh, that letter uh, to represent the Board of County Commissioners in the statement. Has nothing to do with the public. Uh, my, from my perspective, I can't speak for the other two commissioners, was not interested in getting public input in this letter. I was interested in drafting a letter and if I could get the approval from the BOCC to support that letter and publishing it, that it would be published.
Okay, all right, this is Bill. I have, I have to make a comment because you said it's your opinion, Tom. Just for the record, I always consider my constituents on every action I take, including giving praise to anybody. And it, because if, you know, I could really appreciate somebody's job and then find out that it was totally, uh, from a public point of view, um, something that would warrant it, somebody getting fired. But that, that's something we have to consider. You can't be ignoring public input. That doesn't mean that, uh, you know, that we ask them to sit there and write it with us. It means that we have to understand our constituency and, and act accordingly as an elected official in a republic, uh, democratic republic that we have. We represent them.
Now, this is your perspective, correct?
My opinion. I just told you that. It's my opinion.
All right, okay, thank you. Commissioner Prince, did you wanna respond to, uh?
Well, yeah, well, I think, I think.
Yeah, well, yeah, well, I think, I think Ms. Boobis' comment is, is reasonable. However, there have been instances, um, in our history recently, where what perceived to be the rights given to individuals in the Constitution have been curtailed to deal with a specific emergency, um, although I agree with what you're saying, Ms. Boobis, when you say the Constitution is the law of the land, it absolutely is. Um, in fact, um, I don't normally talk about a lot of personal stuff, but in law school, that was my forte, was Constitution law. So, I don't disagree with what you're saying, it's of paramount importance, however, if there are, uh, exigent circumstances that require extraordinary instances, the Constitution previously has been set aside momentarily to deal with the issue, and then brought right back into the forefront. So, I, I think your point is very well taken, um, but do you feel at times, um, if we're talking about public safety and the governor giving out orders on spacing, uh, to prevent, um, the virus from continuing on, that the right to have, um, uh, religious services en masse is inappropriate, and I think we can't say, either you meet the requirements for safety, or go online and have them. No one's saying don't have them, which is saying use an alternative method. That's all I'm really referring to.
All right, thank you. Um, I'll just add one more comment, uh, about this letter of support. It will either come from the Board of County Commissioners, or it will not. Uh, I think we all, as commissioners, respond to, uh, our constituents, i.e. the citizens of this county, uh, that's why, as it's been said many times, that's why there's three of us. If, if a commissioner doesn't feel that, that his constituents that are putting pressure on one of us doesn't feel that letter's appropriate, then that's why we take things to a vote. That commissioner in all clear conscience should vote against it. Uh, I just think that's the way the process is set up. Uh, I don't, obviously, I've never believed that we have to have 100% consensus on anything, that's why there's three commissioners, and not two, in my opinion, but if, if there's pressure from the citizens of this community, one way or the other, then I would expect that pressure to, to manifest itself in a vote.
Public question?
Go ahead.
How many cases of, uh, COVID-19 have we had in Custer County? You gave statistics for Delta County, Fremont County, JP County, but how many, uh, residents do we have? I think it's 4,954. How many cases have we had?
Uh, I will defer to public health, and it's OEM, they post that almost daily, but, uh, I would love to document up, but if you're there, go ahead, so.
This is Alyssa, we have two positive cases, one is recovered, one is still in containment for ICU, um, and we have 12 negative tests.
Okay, and, um, so that's .0004?
No idea, I calculated, but-
I, I just did the math.
Okay. I thought it was-
Yes, it is, and you're welcome.
Thank you.
Hey, Alyssa, while you're on, can, uh, I think, if you look at other counties that are like us, just so I understand how you got to Delta, I think Hinsdale County may be closer, uh, it's, it's something to consider, might wanna look at that.
Sure, Hinsdale has three cases with zero deaths.
Okay, good, thanks. About, about the same as us.
I, I just want to, Meredith, I just wanna also say that the other counties that we've looked at, um, either their public health orders, their caseload, their protocols, all, all that we have done in an effort to make sure that we are, um, in line with best practice, San Juan, Hinsdale, Crowley, and, uh, yeah, so, there's, it's Delta everywhere.
Perfect.
San Juan has zero cases, San Miguel has 17 cases.
Correct, thank you. Yes, Commissioner Prince, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, looking through my notes, what the governor said also, actually, it was the head of, um, uh, the, the medical doctor that they had there, and then the governor agreed with it, that while we have reported somewhere a little over 10,000 cases in Colorado, they estimate the real number is more like 65,000 cases, uh, because many people have a mild case, and apparently, they don't know when someone's gonna have a mild case, or when they're gonna have a fatal case. Uh, however, when a person has it and it's mild, they're still contagious, that's, I just wanted to bring my point up. But what I really wanna say is, when we talk about Custer County having two cases, my heart goes out to the two people who have instrumental, were instrumental in keeping these numbers so low. So, when I hear people say, well, we've only had two cases, so your, your clients are ridiculous, you know, you're overkill in the process, my feeling is, no, what we have done is we've put in place mechanisms, our two health professionals have put in mechanisms that kept it from not being one and two. So, instead of saying, we only have two, let's open up whatever, my feeling is, let's keep going with, with what's working at the moment. So, I, I, I get real concerned when I hear numbers like .0004, or whatever that number is. It, it's because of the excellent work that's been done, and the, the penalty, I am, other than the few dissents that have met, you know, in defiance of the stay-at-home order or in the distance orders, um, other than those few, I think, the counties have done an excellent job in adhering to the recommendations, and that's why we have such a low count.
Yeah, points well taken, sir, thank you. Uh, yeah, I'm just, though, out there, I'm, I don't, I hope nobody believes that this VOC is not committed to moving forward with this economic recovery and getting us back to some point that we could call normal. Uh, I think all three of us are highly committed to that, uh, and support whatever the professionals in those areas bring forth to the, to the county. I just won't see us saying, no, that's crazy, we're not gonna do any economic recovery. So, uh, I'm looking forward to, uh, to sitting down with the Economic Development Corporation and moving forward on this whole, uh, recovery effort. Any other public comments?
Likely debate.
Uh, anything, commissioners, before we adjourn?
No, sir. No, sir, I appreciate the comments.
Thank you.
Mr. Kang, any?
No. Okay, uh, without objection, the chair adjourns the meeting, let the record show, it is 12:22 PM, April 21st. Thank you all for being on, I appreciate your in-